Good afternoon. This is the school board briefing meeting for Tuesday, March 7th, 2017. Ms. Patrica is traveling. Mr. Toyber and Ms. Giovinelli are running late. And Dr. Cuckel is unable to attend just the briefing today. She will be here for the meeting this evening. And I guess I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Atkins.
And get started. Policy 9.04 renovations and modifications. I'll turn it over to Mr. Greg Blerton and Mr. Dominic Giovinelli for the pre-briefing.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. In front of you today, Dominic and I will be briefing you on a revision change to Board Policy 9.04, which is revisions and modifications to facilities. And the primary change to this is to align it with our current organizational structure, both personnel and departments. There are some older titles and departments in the old policy. It's a little over four years old. So we updated that to incorporate our current organizational structure. And it will also give us more consistency and a defined process for renovation and modification requests to district facilities. So in there you'll see safety and soundness was only mentioned around playgrounds. Now it is throughout this form and documents as that's primary of importance. So ultimately resulting in a defined process, a process improvement for your review today.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments?
No, I think it was cut and dry. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it was time to update it. And it looks pretty straightforward, so thank you.
All right. Thank you. And a big thank you to Dominic and all departments in getting this done. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Do we want to do this? Do I call a recess? I mean, how do you feel about?
Well, let's, yeah, if you don't mind, let's call a brief recess and see if, how close they are.
Okay. Let's take a recess until 2:15 and see if we get some more board members. Because the rest of the things, the rest of the items on the agenda, I think we want to have as many board members in attendance as we can. Okay. So we'll adjourn for, until 2:15.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to resume this briefing. And I do want to apologize to staff, members of the public, and presenters who are here for the delay. Thank you for your patience. And I think we will proceed. Dr. Atkins.
Thank you very much. It is my pleasure to turn it over in just a minute to Dr. Bohatch, who will, and this is Ralph, who will take us through alternatives to suspension restorative practices. But before I turn it over to Dr. Bohatch, I do want to also, and I'm sure he'll introduce the staff at Lehigh Acres Middle School and others that are with him. I just have to compliment the efforts of Lehigh Acres Middle. If you look at their data, their reductions have been quite dramatic. And I will have to tell you also, having visited the school, toured the classrooms, there's a lot of great things going on there. They just were recently recognized as an avid demonstration school, one of the few schools in the state of Florida to be recognized as such. So lots of great things going on at that particular school. So at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Bohatch, who will take us through the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. First up, I want to start with introductions and start with a couple of members of my team in the audience. Sarah Thompson, who I stole from Fort Myers High School. In fact, offered Sarah a position, and it took Mr. LaRosa eight months to release her. So you can tell how valuable she is. And she's behind the scenes, and she can run data. She could tell you how many sixth graders had a cheeseburger on a Thursday. She is really, really good with data. And you're in perfect, you arriving at student services, the timing has been perfect. So, thank you. April Thompson, this is what, year four? Originally came here from Suncoast. Credit Union funded April's position, and she's worked magic in her tenure here. Nikita Watson, I want to call you Carthen. And 14 years, was it 14 years ago? 14 years ago, I was a principal at Lehigh Senior, and I was struggling with student discipline. There was a lot of female drama. So I went to Nikita's classroom, and I said, Nikita, you want to be an assistant principal? And she said, absolutely. So made her an assistant principal. And it's hard to believe, it's been 14 years, but I saw it back then, the talent that she had. And it's certainly showing through with all that you're doing at Lehigh Middle. All right. Next up, we have Tina Wordeman. Tina, you're the intervention support specialist at Lehigh Middle. And Jennifer Ryan. Jennifer's a teacher. And a couple of students. We've got Anthony Graham and Savannah Carmona. You want to stand up? Eighth graders at Lehigh Middle. And I want to apologize, stay standing. The principal may come in out. I want to apologize for getting you out of class, okay? So, we're going to make sure we take our time. So you're back right at the bell. Dismissal bell. Okay. All right. First slide. I can remember Dr. Atkins about his second day on the job, I got a phone call, superintendent needs to see you. It's all beautiful. Second day on the job, what did I do? I'm in trouble. I go to his office, and he wants to talk about out-of-school suspension. He said, Pete, I really want to see what it looks like. What it looks like across the district. Why are kids getting suspended? All right. So we ran some reports going back three years, 13, 14, till last year. You can see elementary, middle, and high, for example, middle and high, almost identical. 63% of middle school offenses led to OSS, disruptive behavior, insubordination, and profanity. At the high school level, 60% disruptive behavior, insubordination, and profanity. Elementary, 58% of all out-of-school suspensions were related to disruptive behavior and insubordination. Very surprising when we saw that, across all levels, very common. We're not talking about extreme acts of violence. We're not talking about weapons or drugs. Minor offenses, level-two offenses, leading to out-of-school suspension. There's the three-year averages right there. All right. Next slide. All right. So meeting with the Code of Conduct Committee, we really looked at the old code. So what you're looking at there is the 1516. There is an example of what insubordination looked like. So if I'm an assistant principal, and a student's referred for insubordination, I would pull his record up, and I would see where he was. Was it his first offense? Was it his second offense? Was it his third offense? For, at middle school, fifth offense would land a kid out of school. High school, third offense would have landed a kid out of school. So every infraction led to OSS in the Code of Conduct in prior years. Minor offenses, level-one offenses, level-two offenses, everything led to OSS. All right. That was a big aha. So the Code of Conduct Committee looked at that and said, we've got to fix this. Okay. Next slide. If you look at this year's code, that's what insubordination disruption looks like. So the students refer to the office, assistant principal reviews the referral. Now, the principal, or the assistant principal, has more flexibility with regards to interventions. They're not tied to the old code, which said, first offense, you must do the second offense, you must do this. Okay? Next slide. They now can choose from a menu of interventions. So, student arrives in the office, was written up for insubordination, the AP now can look at the menu and say, okay, maybe it'll be Saturday school. Maybe we'll bring him in for lunch detention. Maybe it'll be PM school. Let's set up a behavior contract. Reverse suspension, something that's popular right now. Whatever, every kid's different. I can remember back when I was a dean of students in Charlotte County, every situation was different. So principals are loving the flexibility to tailor the intervention to that individual student's needs, not tied into the old stuff. So, a lot of creativity, it's working so far, knock on wood. Please know this, I'm going to say it out loud, and I've said it out loud every time I present, out-of-school suspension will never go away. You have to have it. Schools have to be safe. Serious acts of violence, drugs, weapons, students still have to be suspended out-of-school to maintain safety. What we're focusing on, what the Code of Conduct Committee focused on, were the minor offenses, the level-one, the level-twos that led to out-of-school suspension. Okay? And finally, and I keep beating my drum, protect the classroom, protect the classroom, protect the classroom. And I don't see Mark out there, Donna. Loud and clear, every principal, every meeting I go to, we cannot have disruptive students in the classroom. Every student has the right and the opportunity to learn. If a student's being disrupted, they need to be removed. Out-of-school suspension is not the answer. Out-of-school is not the answer. That's where the creativity comes in, and principals are working. The principals are doing a great job. You're going to hear a lot from Ms. Watson, what she's done at Lehigh Middle. And we're going to continue to do the work. All right. Next up, we found this toolbox at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School, had a lot of dust on it. I don't think it was opened up since some principal named Atkins was over there. But another key message here, when you look at Vision 2020, we're talking about alternatives to suspension. All right. We're not talking about restorative practices. It's not an either-or. I hear folks in the community say, well, Lehigh County, they got restorative practices going on. It's either restorative practices or out-of-school suspensions. No, that's not the case. We're focusing on alternatives to suspension. I hear folks in the community say, well, Lee County, they got restorative practices going on. It's either restorative practices or out of school suspensions. No, that's not the case. We're focusing on alternatives to suspension. Restorative practices is just merely a tool in this kit. Okay? I don't want to repeat myself too many times, but I keep, I get frustrated. It's not either or. It's not restorative practices or you're going home. No, just a tool. We trained twenty-four schools, some of the schools are doing more than others, you know, Nikita's got a full menu, she's going to go over in a minute, but I just want everybody to realize that. In this toolbox, you've got lunch detention, loss of privileges, ISS, Saturday school, community service, so there's the toolkit. Each school has the ability and the readiness to implement what they want to implement. Okay? Okay, next up. Okay, we've got a quick video, it's five minutes, it's powerful, it's from Chicago Public Schools, Sullivan High School and the Parker Academy, so you want to go ahead and hit play, April?
When I was in Sullivan, freshman year, there was lots and lots of fights. I couldn't learn anything because it was like basically students in class would just, you know, disturb the peace.
I had this really rough class where there was a lot more disrespect that I faced, just in terms of kids feeling like they could talk to an adult however they wanted to, like there wasn't really a different way for them to speak to the adults in the building.
The kid that we're looking at now is somebody who likely sees trauma on a daily basis, is full of anxiety ninety-nine percent of the time.
In the past, what has happened was either the student gets suspended, or it's usually they'll talk to the dean of students and they'll come back, but they'll come back really upset.
I would say the offender or the situation with that student, I would just say, well, you know what, I'm going to look at the student code conduct, you're getting suspended, that's it.
I believe that when you suspend the student, the only thing you telling them is go home and have free time. That's the only thing that you're doing. When it comes to their classwork, you making them fall behind.
You know, how is that really going to justify the student's change mentally, socially? How is it going to change in that aspect?
The punishment is so harsh and there's no conversations that go along with them. We don't teach them that. We don't teach them to take responsibility on what happened. We don't help them to reflect upon what happened or what they've done.
You'd be the first one in your family to get a high school diploma, first one to graduate from Sullivan. We're oh for two with your family. I want to be one for three. And you're this close. Graduation is May third. When you talk of restorative justice and reduction of suspension, the biggest misconception is that when kids make mistakes and we don't suspend, we're letting them off the hook. That's their whole life, has been wrong someone and then run from it, wrong someone and not talk about it. I would tend to think that we are actually making them more on the hook.
You're not supposed to reward them by giving them free time. You actually, you should help them out and say, you know what, we're going to keep you in school, so you won't be behind.
There's a time for aggressive punishment when you jeopardize the safety of a building, but the greater majority incidents that happen do not jeopardize the majority of the building.
I think the greatest change was in me. I began to see the same behaviors over and over again. And when I realized it, I said, wait, I said, something else is wrong if Johnny can't stop fighting. So then I reached out to our clinicians, our social workers and our counselor and our case manager and I said, look at this, I need you to look at the behaviors that I'm seeing. Find out the trigger, what's triggering him to that point? And then once we found that out and I began to really look at it, it was time to stop talking about the problem and making a solution.
What we want to teach our students is to kind of navigate through that conflict, take some accountability, ownership of that, of when you do harm and really learn the skill of reflecting on it.
When we have, there's still conversations with students, when we can talk one-on-one and share our feelings, like, this is how I feel right now, this is how you affected my teaching, this is how this impacted everybody else, how do you feel about this? Or, what would you do if you were me?
And suddenly now they're confronting it in the moment, being present on what really happened, rather than making up excuses or rationalizing it away, blaming someone else for it. So we do a lot of peer-to-peer conversations and teaching them how to talk to each other and then we also do conflict resolution, a lot of that. We've also established more of a culture of respect and a culture of positive interactions. We're really stressing positive relationships.
It's adults in this building that will give you a different point of view. Most of the time, it prevents things from happening.
When they start seeing other people, you know, faculty and staff members generally caring about them, not just, hey, how you doing, but actually, how are you?
Other faculty members here, they want us to graduate on time.
This year has been really, really good. The hallway is peaceful, you have students in class.
Grades went up, scores went up, you know, we didn't want to, we show growth.
It's like everybody's trying to learn right now, everybody's trying to pass and trying to learn something.
All the other teachers here, they are very supportive, they really want you to do the right thing when it comes to education and like, they want you to have a really good life, they don't want you, they don't want you out in the street.
When I began to really assess the communities where they're coming out of and what's going on with them at home, then we wanted this to be their safe haven.
If I need help on something, I can go to one of the teachers, the staff. They make you feel like you're family to them, you mean something to them, you're very special.
We actually listen, we talk to, we mentor, we give and help develop skills to students that might not have necessarily had them. Some of the students look at us as fathers, mothers, mentors.
And that's the difference, the concern, the compassion, the love, and that's called real love, that they're good enough.
And what I want to see is less students giving up and more students making the decision and the choice to be somebody positive in our community.
Okay, next up, April's going to arise with the brief overview of restorative practices.
Good afternoon. Even though that video showed Chicago Public Schools, we chose it to share with you today because it really does highlight or illustrate the things that are happening here in our Lee County schools and those schools that are implementing restorative practices. That video did a great job in defining what restorative practices truly is, which is an emphasis on building relationships. Through building relationships, restorative practices acknowledges that those relationships are the culture to building a great community. Restorative practices also ensures equity of voice among all of its members, whether that's teachers, administrators, students, lunchroom, support staff, everybody in the school is heard and a valued member of that community. Restorative practices also build systems that address misbehavior and harm in a way that strengthens those relationships. It also engages in collaborative problem solving. Restorative practices also enhance accountability, responsibility and empowers change and growth for all members of the school community. You can see up here on this slide, the hypothesis that really supports what restorative practices is all about. And this comes from William Glasser's Social Discipline Window, where as a restorative practitioner, we're not only setting high expectations, but we're also providing a high level of support and services so that those expectations can be met. In addition to Glasser's Social Discipline Window, restorative practices is also built on the ideas of fair process. This slide here shows you a comparison between the traditional, more punitive approach to school discipline, where we often ask questions such as, what rule was broken? Who broke it? And what should the punishment be? Whereas in a more restorative paradigm, we're asking, what happened? Who was affected? And what needs to be done to make it right? Restorative questions lay the foundation for and act as building blocks for all forms of restorative practices. So really, what we need to understand is that restorative practices, it's not a program, it's a change in culture. It's a way of thinking and a way of doing things. With regards to how we are implementing restorative practices within the school district, this is our first year of a three-year plan to provide professional development to all of our schools. In year one, twenty-four schools were solicited to participate in the initial training that occurred this past summer in June. These schools volunteered to participate in this training. They learned a spectrum or continuum of practices in which they then developed their own individual school action plans. The team members took that information back to their schools and then further disseminated the information among their staff. Coming up in year two, which will be this coming summer, we plan on expanding the restorative schools that are trained to include the remainder of our middle and high schools and then also open up to elementary schools. And then by year three, we hope to have all schools within Lee County trained on restorative practices. Also, I want to mention that all of our school counselors were provided a refresher on peer mediation at all levels, K-12. We will be training social workers next week on restorative practices too. And then in May, we will be meeting with our behavior specialists within the district to also provide professional development with them. This slide here shows the continuum of practices that we have adopted here within our school district, starting with the most informal, which are effective statements, questioning, and then leads you all the way to the most formal practices, which is where you'll find your procedural fair processes in place with formal mediations and conferencing. We've got a, we've got some preliminary data to kind of show you the effects of restorative practices within our schools. This slide here highlights middle schools for semester one. The blue is going to be for the 2015-16 school year, semester one, and the orange is this school year, semester one, for out of school suspension. For those schools that are RP trained, there is a total of fifty-one percent reduction in out of school suspension compared to just a twenty-three percent reduction for schools not trained in restorative practices. For the high school, it's very much the same, wherein, for those schools that are RP trained, we've got a fifty-one percent reduction and those that have not been trained so far, only a twenty-three percent reduction in out of school suspension. And then lastly, but not least, we have Lee High Acres Middle School, who we have invited here today to share their wonderful programs. From last school year to this school year and semester one alone, they've had an over sixty-six percent reduction in out of school suspension. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Watson.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I attribute this reduction to restorative practices and I am going to take you through some more of the data, broken down a little bit more. So if you look at referrals during the 15-16 school year, we had a total of two thousand six hundred and thirty-one referrals. And if you look at that by quarter, last year we had just under seven hundred referrals per quarter. This year, as of February twentieth, that's third quarter, end of third quarter, we had a total of seven hundred and eight referrals. So per quarter this year, we have ridden about two hundred and eighty-three referrals and if everything stays the same, we are on pace for one thousand one hundred and thirty-two referrals. That's about a sixty percent decrease. The bottom row looks at out of school suspensions. So last year, we had four hundred and forty out of school suspensions per quarter last year. That was about a hundred and ten suspensions per quarter. And as of February twentieth, we've only suspended total eighty-four students this year. And if you look at that by quarter, that's about thirty-four per quarter. And again, if everything stays the same, we're on pace for a hundred and thirty-six, that's about a seventy percent decrease in out of school suspensions. Next slide. So to tell you a little bit about our journey with restorative practices, the first thing we did last summer, as April said, we sent a team of teachers and administrators to restorative practices training during the summer. During preschool, the very first day that teachers returned to the building, we invited a trainer from Ruby Pains organization out to train our teachers on how to work with students in poverty. If you're not familiar with Ruby Pains, she wrote the book, A Framework for Understanding Poverty. It was a very eye-opening training and we also did a book study on this book as well. The, I would like to share one of my favorite quotes from the book. It said, "No significant learning occurs without a significant relationship." So the very first week of school, we've gone through the training, the very first week that we had students, we did not touch content. We worked on building relationships and getting to know our students. So it is important for me to share that it has not been an easy journey. At first, teachers, they were frustrated, they did complain, I did have the Talc rep to sit down with me in the beginning. But what we did, we shared the data with the staff, we kept the data in front of them. So they saw that the referrals were decreasing, the students' behavior improved, the school culture improved. We haven't had a, and this is middle school, students fight. We have not had a fight on campus since October. We're in February now. So again, that's big for our school, it's a huge change, big for our teachers and our students. Right now, we don't have the complaints, it's a way of life now, and it has made a huge difference.
And I just want to just interject, just to emphasize how important that piece of information is. You know, I've been in a number of middle schools over my career and, and to be able to all but eliminate fighting from October to the present is quite a remarkable task. You know, there, I've seen middle schools where you can have, you know, three fights a day. So that's hats off to her and her staff, that's a pretty amazing statistic.
Thank you. So what we've done, we've had conversations with teachers, some teachers who struggle with classroom management, we do meet with those teachers and have conversations. And the biggest thing, we treat every student who makes an inappropriate decision as a case-by-case basis. So it's not like Mr. Bohatch, oh sorry, Dr. Bohatch shared before, every referral is different. Before, if a student cursed a teacher out, the student was probably suspended. Well, now it's different. We want to find out what's the reason for that. And just this week, we did have a student who made that mistake and he found out that he was being evicted. They did not know where they were going to stay. So we do get down to the root causes. Like I shared before, we share the data and best practices at every faculty meeting. For the minor offenses, Saturday school is big, so instead of a student being suspended or spending the day in ISS, they come in to Saturday school from nine to twelve. They paint, lay mulch and pick up paper around the building. And of course, again, like Dr. Bohatch said, OSS has not disappeared, we do reserve that for the major offenses. And I do want to share this group with you. This is a group that one of the teachers put together. He took the students that had the most referrals, they had two or more Fs and a high absentee rate. So he took the top group and created this group. They're called Boys of Tomorrow, sorry, Boys Up To Date and Men Of Tomorrow. And they act as ambassadors for the school, they dress up on Fridays with a shirt and tie and they perform community services on the weekends. And now they are leaders on campus. Before, these were the students who were getting suspended, they were in my office for school-based hearings. They're not those students anymore, they're in class now. And now I would like to introduce Ms. Wordeman, she's going to tell you more about what we do with restorative practices. This is her passion and, go ahead, take it away, Ms. Wordeman.
I'll take it away. Thank you. Good afternoon. First, I'd just like to say that to be sitting here is very exciting for us. It's exciting for the students behind me, it's exciting for all their teachers back at school too. When we're learning about all this data, we're, we look at it and say, okay, it's Tuesday, we got to go, we got to peer mediation, let's get moving. We don't look at it, we look at, how can we best help the student? So last year, Ms. Watson, I think she probably saw my frustration, go into Mr. Restino's office and hear, it's the student's fourth offense, he'd get out the code book and go down, I'd be hanging my head saying, my favorite phrase, we're disenfranchising the already disenfranchised. So here she is. So here she asked me if I would head up restorative practices at the school, to which I certainly subscribed to that philosophy and jumped at the chance. So if we look at our toolbox up there, April, if you can pull the, our assortment, our tools out, we're grateful to have the flexibility and an assortment to fit the needs of our student. Where if we look and just kind of go around our tools up in the upper left, classroom respect agreement. I'll give you a brief overview of each one of those tools. We actually have a teacher that practices respect agreements with me, Ms. Ryan, that you'll hear from. I may go into a classroom and model that for the teacher as the interventionist to establish a classroom community of what does it mean to have respect to your teacher, from your teacher, and to one another, but that we understand we're human beings, rules may be broken. It's how we solve them. It's how we take responsibility for when they are broken. And we've seen a lot of success with that. In fact, I'm asked daily, pretty much, if I was just asked this morning, can I go into so-and-so's block four tomorrow? That teachers may hear from Ms. Ryan or another teacher that, hey, what's that respect agreement? I think I need it with my sixth block. Can we, can we have that going? And then they, they pretty much spread it throughout their day. We may do classroom circles, and that may be on a weekly basis where you'll sit the students in a circle, just like you saw in that video, and talk about, how are we doing as a class? How are we feeling today? Anything bothering anyone today? Or they may have a specific subject to discuss. We do a lot of restorative agreements between a teacher and a student. That I think is, it's a very important component. If a student is removed from a classroom, teachers are human beings, they may be angry. What happens to the student? They're angry. That relationship can exist with a power struggle. Therefore, if we sit down, and it's generally with myself or someone else, and we're like an outside party that listens to both sides and to say, well, can you see where the teacher's coming from? Can you see where the student's coming from? And how can we solve that to repair the relationship? And that, we've seen a lot of success with that as well. If I go up to the upper left to our pair of players there, this one's kind of funny. We call it the uphill challenge, named after Mr. Hill, that was part of the Men of Tomorrow. We may choose a student that, let's say, needs a little mentoring, and we have a little competition between us as staff members of, let's mentor this student and see if we can reduce referrals, and we can up their grades. And if that happens, we set goals with the students, we write a contract. But the big hoopla is that we track it, say for a quarter, can they outeat Mr. Hill and Mr. Restino in chicken wings? And to say we've had a lot of success, we do have our reigning chicken wing champ right behind me that you'll hear from as well. Another important piece is our peer mediation program that we started in October, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. We've reserved that little, the wire cutters there for the individualized reflective practices that restore. That might be something so individual that it's targeted towards one specific student for what might be happening, like Ms. Watson said, if a student is evicted, found out their parent had cancer, eight kids living in one home. Are we going to see behaviors? Most probably. So we look at that a little bit differently and target that student for an intervention. We'll see a little bit of data on that. So under that umbrella, if we look at a referral analysis, we have a student who might be getting a few referrals. It comes to my attention. I will start tracking it with the student and track grades right there on an Excel spreadsheet, right with them. And what I want them to see, where are the referrals coming from? Then we can target what we have to do. Do we need a restorative agreement? Do we need conversations? Where do we go from there? And that comes with power with the student, making these decisions right with us, too, of how can they repair the harm? How can they fix the problem? I will track, if you look at the graph on the left, I tracked referrals. So we can see that in September, there were three, but we see that referrals go down. What I want the students to see is, I look at the grades. So for the same period, that might be the grades. What's happening with grades? You can see that they go up. I want them to see visually, we do a lot of talking. Sometimes we talk at kids, but if we have them participate and see the difference, as referrals go down, grades will go up, that has proven to be very powerful, too. Can we go to the next slide? What are our results? The intangible part of relationships. Student-teacher relationships improve, the students feel valued. Ms. Ryan will give you her experience. We had a couple quotes, one from a teacher there. If you come to an agreement with the student, you know where they're coming from, you feel like a weight has been lifted. And then from a student, he said he felt comfortable because he can talk to the teachers and know that they care about you. That is the intangible part that I think is important. The data shows that referrals decrease, suspension and grades increase. If we can go to that next one there? We'll take a look inside one of our programs, the students that we brought today into peer mediation. We started it in October. We've had quite a few cases. Our last one was at 12:05 today, with these two here. It's expanding, and what we see as results is less verbal and less physical aggression, increase in problem-solving skills. So I'm going to turn that over to the real experts here. This is Anthony, and this is Savannah. So why don't we can talk, do you have your mic on? Okay. I'm going to ask Savannah, I want her to, I'd like her to tell you how she became a peer mediator.
It all started over me and a girl. We were arguing out in the portables. And then we got in trouble, and then we got sent to ISS. And then after that, Ms. Wordeman was our mediator, and she talked to us about stuff, like not getting in trouble no more. And then after that, Ms. Wordeman told us we should be peer mediators. And then we signed up, and now we're peer mediation.
And has that helped you when you look at situations that involve some drama differently?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Anthony here to my left. I told Anthony that we, we're going to be honest. Anthony was no stranger to ISS in the past, and now he is a peer mediator, and I'd like him to just somewhat tell his story from where he was to where he is now.
So I was in ISS like all my sixth grade year. Me and my teachers did not get along. All my teachers did not like me, and then I had a teacher switch. A teacher left her school and a new teacher came. She was my reading teacher. And me and her built a relationship. I only did work in her class, no other teacher. I only did work in my reading teacher's class. Because we had a relationship, I respected her, she respected me. I did work, she graded it, and we built a relationship. And in my seventh grade year, it was still kind of the same. Some of my teachers didn't like me. I kind of built more relationships with my teachers. But now my eighth grade year, all my teachers get along with me. I get along with all my teachers. I'm a peer mediator, my grades are great. I made AB on the roll.
What happens if you might start to slip? How many people you got on you in your village?
All of my teachers, every single one of them. Why are your grades slipping, Anthony?
And before we turn it over for any questions, Ms. Ryan? Ms. Ryan's right over here, and she's a teacher that practices the respect agreements I spoke about earlier.
Hi, I'm Ms. Ryan. I teach science, and in my class, we do a respect agreement the first two weeks of school. And this gives kids power in the classroom. It is a very powerful tool as a teacher to use, because the teacher, the students know what to expect in the classroom. They know, they help to set up the rules, they help to set up the procedures. They tell me and let me know, this is going to set me off. This is going to help me as a student learn. So we do a student-to-student, what, how should students treat each other? How should students treat the teacher? How should the teacher treat the students? How should everybody in the class treat materials in the classroom? And they hold each other and me accountable. I hold them accountable, and we act as a team. So for me, this is changing my classroom. It changed my culture. We went from a, this is my rule, this is my, the way to do it, to a community, to a family. We did team, we do team building. We do classroom circles where the kids and I are able to discuss as a group. There is no leader. We all talk. So it makes it amazing, and the class, we get so much more done. There's not the classroom discipline problems, because we all know what to expect, and we all know how to handle each other, or what goes on in the classroom.
Okay, that concludes the presentation. Any questions? Comments?
Board members.
I'll start.
Okay.
One of the aspects that I have seen in the schools that do practice a restorative justice model is the fact that it assists the students in developing skills that will help them cope in a crisis situation. They learn different types of skills to use during that time. And I also want to add on to the fact that you were talking about the aspect of building I was visiting James Stevens last week, and while I was there, there was a young man that came along, kind of mopey, with a bag of vegetables. I don't think, but it wasn't the vegetables that were causing the problem. He had, Mr. Savage got down eye-to-eye level and was able to have conversations with him. Now, at the beginning of the year, that wasn't the case. And he had just come from a situation where he was being reprimanded, and at the end, he was asked, he was given responsibility to take the vegetables to a certain teacher. But Mr. Savage shared a story about when he was on the bus one day, this little young man. And Mr. Savage came to the bus, and the bus driver wouldn't let him go see Mr. Savage. "You go on, get back in your seat." You know, typically how, you know, sometimes we as mamas do. And we put, was trying to get the discipline, and it kept going, and he, he was pretty insistent that he wanted to go see Mr. Savage. And she asked, well, why do you need to see Mr. Savage? He said, "He loves me." And so he walked over to Mr. Savage and gave him his hug. And that's a powerful piece, because as they learn that whatever you do is because you truly love them and you truly care, they will accept, they're much more receptive of what goes on. And as you were talking and were looking at this for middle school and high school, a lot of those behaviors do begin at elementary level. And I'm really appreciative of our Head Start program, because they do conscious discipline training with the parents, and it's being done within Head Start. But evidently, I, it's my understanding, the conscious discipline is also moving into some of our elementary schools. And it's where they're basically teaching the children how to handle the stressors, giving them the tools, and being very specific in how you work with them. And so I just appreciate all the work that the students, the staff, everyone has done, because it has to be a total buy-in. And Savannah?
Yes.
And, oh dear, I was doing really well. I'm sorry.
Anthony.
Anthony! I just appreciate you, that you were able to take situations and rise above it. And we talk about having good adult role models, but I have to say, for a lot of the kids in middle school and high school, what makes a bigger difference are the role models that are their peers. And so I just thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Great job by everybody. Thank you. First off, I'll just start out with a negative, because there's one little negative and there's 3,000 positives. But I don't like the coined restorative justice or restorative programs, and just because it already has a social connotation and a label to what that is. And Dr. Bohatch, you've alluded to it at the beginning, that you, you have to say it, then you have to qualify it, you have to explain it. And I really like the pictorial that you had, when you called it ATS, you know, the alternative to suspension. And I really think that we need to really consider coining that ATS, because that's really what this is. This is an alternative to suspension. And it's the pro, it's the tools that you use in that toolbox of ATS, rather than, you know, the words, you know, the label, because it's not about the label. It's about the great things that you've done with the tools that you've had. So that, that's my negative. My positive, as far as the suspension process, is I believe, and I know Dr. Atkins is a huge advocate, and so is Dr. Bohatch, that, you know, keeping the students in school, to giving them the hands-on, the ability to learn, is where it's at, is the key. So I'm really good, I really like that. And the accountability for their actions, but also, it's different when you hold somebody accountable, and like you said, to get the repeat, because you just hold them accountable and they keep coming back. It's really learning about the underlying, you know, you know, what triggered, what caused that behavior, or that reason to act out or to respond the way they do. And it may be a symptom or something that they're dealing with, you know, at the school, I mean, at home, or in their own life, or they're, or how they're wired, or all that they know how to do. They've never seen that model. So, so I like that, and I like the ability to, that you talk about with the relationships, to build the relationships, to show them things that they may not even be aware of on how to handle the situation. And because of that mediation, I mean, as a certified mediator, and trying to get all my fellow attorneys to say, hey, let's mediate it, rather than, you know, you won't find a better proponent of that, of that process. And because it gives you so much more opportunities to actually find out, it's not just, they did something wrong, so there's a punishment. It, there's, it takes everything off the table and say, okay, now, we've got a situation and the mediators, and I like the way you guys have been trained, to be able to listen and really find out what is going on, and what needs are not being met, and what caused that problem, and can we figure out a solution? So I like it. The numbers are just amazing, and I really think that we're on to this, and I really support it. And I think that, you know, Lehigh is definitely setting the mark as far as the, what to model it after. So I'm really great, and for the students that are stepping forward and doing this, I hope that you continue, not just your eighth graders, that you bring that, that model with you to the high school, whatever high school you choose, because you guys can be the catalyst that can really bring this forward and set this district up as a model for people to emulate. So, thank you.
Ms. Uvaneli?
Well, I'm excited, too, actually. So I'm going to give y'all, like, this is awesome, you're doing a great job, and I hope that you can mentor others in the district. I want to make sure that everyone, you know, can buy into it and understand it. I think it's a mindset, and, and so we all, not everybody's understanding it, I believe. So we've got to help people change that, the mindset. I think it's really important to keep kids in school and then out of school, absolutely. So I think that's a great thing. And one of the questions I have is for Dr. Bohatch, the, your projection that all school, all our schools in Lee County are doing restorative practices, and whatever you want to call it. And so what is that timeframe? Because I know you've told me, but I just, I think it's important that everyone is on the same page of that.
Okay, this is year one. This summer will be phase two. All middle and high will be trained after the summer, and then year three, all the rest.
Okay.
We started in with a three-year, you know, there were districts that tried to go full-blown, you know, right out of the shoots, and then, you know, Union wasn't on board, and it failed miserably. So we were really strategic to say, let's move slow to go faster with this project, so.
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure of that, because I think that's really important, because, I mean, to learn to right the wrong is a mindset. People need to wrap their heads around that and understand it. I think it becomes a learning process for our students, but honestly, for the staff and administration, to be able to understand that concept. And so that's really important. And so that's really important, that training is done and maybe mentorship. I would love to see Anthony and Savannah maybe mentor someone. So I think that's really important because that's where the trust comes back in for everyone is to, to have respect, you got to give it. And so it's, it's a mindset. So I think we can do it. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
So no one is more excited about this than I am. In, in 2011, my first year on the board, I sent a memo to the then superintendent and my colleagues talking about out-of-school suspension and our code of conduct that contained no interventions at the time. And over the years, we have made slow but steady changes. This is a very big district. It's a paradigm shift from a punitive approach to a relationship-building, positive behavior approach. So I'm extremely excited. I want to congratulate Lehigh Acres Middle School for the work you've done. It's phenomenal. And I hope that other schools are looking at you because your success speak for itself. It is all about the relationships and Dr. Pruitt and I talk about that all the time because this might not only apply to children, but I think it also applies to all of us as, as teammates and workers and all of our staff members. So when people feel valued, appreciated and included and are given that power that you talked about to have some control over their own environment, good things happen. So again, I want to say, I loved, Nikita, I loved your quote. You know, it may not be easy, but it's worth it. It's an investment of time and energy. But the return on the investment is just unbelievable. So again, thank you all for all the work you do, April and Sarah and Dr. Bohatch. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and I just have a few comments also. I, I get what you're doing. I think it's terrific. I think it's needed. It's important. I guess my concern comes from the fact that you are embarking on a cultural change in this district. And I know that there's been some pushback. And when you make a statement like, the principals are loving it, how do you know that? Have you asked them, I mean, in a way that they can say honestly what it has meant to them? Because we're talking a lot about, we've moved kids out, we've moved kids away from out-of-school suspension and we're doing things internally. But I'm hearing anecdotal, apart from the improvement in grades and the reduction in suspensions, sort of hearing anecdotal evidence about what's working and for whom. I would also like to know how the teachers feel about this because you're starting with the schools that want to do it. Next are the schools that will follow the lead of the schools that have been successful. And then you're going to have the schools that are going to, and, or the teachers or the principals who are going to say, this isn't going to work here and I'm not engaged. And that's when it really gets tough. And that's why I think it's really important that you understand with the low-hanging fruit, what has worked, why it has worked and what you need to do to reinforce. So I guess my, my questions were, I saw that you have action plans. Do you go back and look at your action plans and see what worked and what didn't work? Does everybody have access to training? Is it just teachers? Is it cafeteria workers? Is it custodians? And then, and who's, how do you refresh? How do you assess that you need to refresh training or provide additional training?
Okay, you want all those answers now?
No. But I, I-
Your point is, is, is well-taken. And, and I think we need to survey, first off, we need to survey teachers at the RP schools.
Right.
Parents and-
Exactly.
I hear you loud and clear.
Okay. And, but, but please, do not take this as a negative.
No, 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 you're right.
Fantastic first step, but I would hate to see us lose ground because I feel we need more data, so.
We're going to provide that.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Are there more comments? Ms. Fisher?
I just wanted to add one thing. You know, this is not a reinvention of the wheel and this is not something totally new. Over 20 years ago, when I was an elementary school counselor, I had a peer mediation program. And it got so popular that all the kids were self-appointed themselves peer mediators. And we finally had to get something called the Peace Team so that all kids who adopted those practices could be members of the Peace Team because we could only have a certain number of trained mediators. But just recently, I got an invitation from a high school principal and a former one of my mediators, who is now a history teacher, wanted me to come and speak to his group called the Students for Social Justice. And he told the kids, you know, that when he was in fourth grade, he was a mediator. And he said, this is so cool, Mrs. Fisher, that you're here. And I was one of your mediators and now I'm doing the same thing. So I think it, it's a real, the, you know, I, you're, you're giving us the reality check. And that is true and I've heard those same anecdotes. But I really believe that when students like Anthony and Savannah learn these skills, they have these skills in them for a lifetime and they will use them down the road. So it'll serve in the future, I think, to make our community better. But it's a long, slow process. And the leadership is key because there has to be the buy-in. So, thanks.
Yeah, I think the point is, we want it to stick. We know it can work.
Absolutely.
We wanted to stick this time. Ms. LaRivier?
Oh, and just a point to tag on to Mr. Toiber's comments, which are very valid about the, the name. There are many people in the community, when they hear that, they develop a negative perception. And this is our own program that we're targeting. We need to come up with a naming of what we're doing that is truly a Lee County name. And so I would encourage some way for that to, to occur. I believe that we need to make sure, because you shouldn't have to explain because people have the wrong perception.
And to that I would add, Mr. Bohatch, Project Yes came up with a great name in collaboration with the community for this. It's a starting point maybe for rethinking how you want, how we want to make it the Lee, do it the Lee County way. Anyway.
We stole ATS from the superintendent over at Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle. So probably going to come up with something different.
I think you can come up with something good.
Good with that.
Just making sure. Thank you all. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Well, and I think as, as they're leaving, one of the things that you, you see is that it's all about, you know, student academic performance and changing student behavior. So it's not just manipulation, it's not manipulation of numbers or something like that. It's about actually changing behavior. And so, yeah, I think they've done a remarkable job. The next group coming up, Dr. Pruitt, is going to talk to us about a proposal for attainable housing. And similar to what you saw in the last presentation, but then literally taking the, the data analysis and the application of quality tools to a whole new level. They are looking at a number of ways to attack probably one of our largest challenges in the school district and that is the challenge of teacher retention. So first of all, I just want to say hats off to Human Resources and their staff because they, they certainly have drilled down, like you heard in the last presentation, let's get to the root cause of what the issue is before we start to dream up solutions. So they have certainly done that in their Black Belt project and Green Belt projects that they've had and then targeted strategies to try to get at their number one issue. So having said that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Pruitt, who is courageously joining us today after being out for, she can tell you about, about that. If she hasn't already, you can see the cast on her hand. But I appreciate her being here and she'll talk to us about a proposal for attainable housing.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board. Happy to be here this afternoon to, to share this information with you. I just want to go ahead and do some introductions so you know who's with us this afternoon. Of course, you know Mr. Moore. Hopefully you know Mr. Moore. And then we have Scott Allen, who is the president of Allen Development Group. And we have Michael DeVito, who is president of Alpha Equity Group. So just to give you a little bit of background, we, Mr. Moore and I were invited to attend an event that was put on in the community for the several counties relative to this idea of workforce housing. And it was an invitation that went out to large and small employers alike, developers, real estate folks, to talk about this, what we're seeing systemic issue related to housing in this area, especially as the markets are rebounding and unemployment is going down and how this is an issue that this community needs to, to address. I don't know, Mr. Moore, if you wanted to comment on, on attending that event?
No.
So what I wanted to share with you is a little bit about how we got to, we called you the why. We attended the event that sort of started this idea percolating. And so as we look at this, this is definitely something that would directly impact Goal Three, which is increasing the retention of effective and highly effective employees and specifically addressing the issue of teacher retention, as Dr. Atkins mentioned. So we embarked on a Black Belt project in Human Resources, as we've shared, all of Human Resources, getting Yellow Belt trained and then some folks Green Belt. And then now specifically this Black Belt project. What better thing to look at than teacher retention? And looking at why teachers are leaving our district. And I think what's important to note about that work is that Human Resources has developed a comprehensive teacher retention plan that I kind of view, like you see here, it's a, it's a wheel and there's lots of spokes to that wheel. And this particular presentation today addresses two spokes on that wheel and that is affordable housing and then also socializing. I know, I remember when I started in this position, the question was, well, Angela, what are those exit surveys saying? What are you doing with that information? And I told you that what we needed to do is revamp the surveys to begin with and then also implement some stay surveys and other methods to actually get at the data to look at why teachers stay and why teachers leave. And so as a result of that, you will see here, and you'll see parts and pieces of this HR retention plan coming forward in different presentations, but conceptually, this presentation is related to this particular project. And so what we identified through that project is the teachers, you know, when they leave, who they are and, you know, what is the, where can we get sort of the most bang for the buck in, in terms of strategies? And this particular strategy is really going to be focused on, I mean, it, it addresses all teachers, but very specifically those teachers in years zero through two with the district. And then we're looking currently at what that looks like. And you'll see here, that is our current teachers that are employed with us, single teachers that are employed with us that are in, in that range, with our potential market, if you will. And then we looked at where those people live relative to just sort of our, our particular area in general. And so that kind of gives you the basis for the start of this conversation. And now I'm going to turn it over to Scott and he's going to talk to you a little bit about the, his expertise and that's the current market and, and what the status of the market is today.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Atkins, those in the public that was able to attend today. My name is Scott Allen, president of Allen Development Group. And I'm a multifamily real estate developer in Lee County. I've got several past and current projects that are currently successful in the market. And I had met Angela and Dr. Pruitt and Mr. Moore at the convention for workforce housing to address the issue of attainable housing amongst anybody in the workforce, including specifically teachers, which is why they were there. I sit here before you as a self-proclaimed expert in market conditions, construction planning and construction management. So I think aligning my interests with the school board on a project like this serves everybody. I'd like to have you take a look at the slide and have you notice the trend of vacancy rates since the recession in 2008, when we peaked at 15.1% vacancies, indicative of price reductions, landlord concessions. In 2014, I was the second developer in Lee County to pull a permit for multifamily development. We had noticed that, that the vacancy rates were tightening and trending tighter. At the time that I pulled permits, vacancy rates were seven and a half percent and creeping towards five, as you can see, the following year in 2015, when I delivered my first asset to the market, we were at a 5.5% vacancy rate and by 2016, even tighter at 3.9%. Third-party analysts have opined that the market is going to continue to get tighter in the apartment market. It's a very bullish market among multifamily developers because of where we are currently living. We're in a hotbed for inbound migration. Our outbound migration has slowed. Millennials are renting at, are trending as renters in massive numbers. And it's tightening the rental market so much that the rental rates are continuing to increase. And as a real estate developer, what we look at and the trend that we look at to increase our rental rates is the vacancy factor. Once vacancy rates hit seven and a half percent or tighter, we continue to increase our rental rates to the point of stabilization, which is around that seven and a half percent mark. Lenders underwrite us at that, so that's, that's typically a number that we use. With current 3.9% vacancy rates, we see no end in sight, as the third-party analyst also has determined. And that's going to be a trend continuing through 2019 and likely therefore furthermore into the future. That's just about as far as analysts will project out, about three years. In 2016, Lee County estimated median rent is $1,115 for a dwelling of rent. Seventy-six, the super majority of the units at 76% rent for over $1,000. And I challenge anybody in this room who's looking for appealing housing in high-quality submarkets to go try to find an appealing home for them and their family to enjoy that they can get at $1,115 today. It does not exist today unless you go into the outlying areas and you get into the rurally-platted neighborhoods of the city, which are fine by any stretch of the means. However, for a teacher or the workforce and what I consider our community heroes, our teachers, cops and firemen and city and county workers, there's nowhere to live that you can, you can create a social environment for like-minded individuals that they can have an appealing home to live and an appealing lifestyle. And I just was told earlier that Mrs. Wittenborn with Colonial Elementary School is sitting here today and I know that she's been kind enough to speak on our behalf. And I've got a little bit of intimacy here with relation to, you know, the school teachers. And I have a nine-year-old son and he's a fourth grader at Heights Elementary. And I hold his teachers to the highest level of integrity and I hold them to, as heroes, as I mentioned. And these people that I consider heroes, who teach my son and are members of the community, who's our future, have a hard time finding a place to live. We're in a, we're in a very specific situation right now to where the school board is in a position to act to mitigate this housing crisis. It's existing and it's getting worse. The market forecast for multifamily, the main question that I, that I ask is, where are teachers going to afford high-quality submarkets? And the simple answer is, they can't. You can't go into any new Class A apartment complexes and get a unit for $1,100 and expect to get immediate occupancy. So for Mrs. Wittenborn, for instance, if her lease expires in May and she goes to Channelside Apartments in South Fort Myers and said, I want to rent a one-bedroom unit, they're going to put her on a six-to-eight-month waiting list and still not guarantee her a lease at that six-to-eight-month term. So even if she gets an extension from her current place she resides at, she has no guarantee with her busy lifestyle that she's going to be able to have a lease executed on her behalf by the landlord. According to the third-party market study, between 2016 and 2019, there's a demand, a pent-up demand for almost 3,000 apart, market-rate apartment units in Lee County. And I want to emphasize market rate, where the current average rent rate on market-rate apartments is $1,175 and growing. In 2017, between all multifamily developers, there's a schedule for almost 800 units to be delivered between 2017 and 2018. Compared to the pent-up demand that's needed of 3,000 units, that's going to, that's going to further tighten vacancy rates, further push up rental rates and further give the teachers a disability to find appealing housing. To HUD standards, anybody that pays in excess of 30% of their income is considered rent burdened. These are those teachers, rent burden, that are driving to school each and every day, living in outlying rural markets, who face an hour or maybe even two hours of traffic in Nightmare 41 season traffic. And even with our growing population, it's just a day-to-day traffic problem at this point. So you're festering these problems of road rage and thinking about all these problems that you have at home with not being able to find a close place to live and work, next to commercial nodes where you can run across the street and get your kid Chuck E. Cheese or down to the, to the local restaurant. These teachers and workforce are driving to work with that angry mindset, some of them, and they get into a- them, and they get into a class and expected to teach 25, five-year-old kids. Same thing with policemen, same thing with firefighters, I've heard it from all departments. We, we believe that the apartment rents, according to third market, third-party market studies, are going to continue to increase at a, at a rate of 3.9% between 2018 and 2019. And it's not getting any better, further, further to the point that Forbes has ranked Cape Coral and Fort Myers the fastest-growing area in the nation. And if we're the fastest-growing market in the nation, what's that going to do to inventory with people moving down, with millennials trending heavily, heavily, heavily as renters? So, we're just in a new market, we're just in new fundamentals today than we were pre-recession. The market is entirely changed. The free market is unable to handle this crisis, so it's time for somebody that has a solution, which I believe the district, the school district does, to apply that and help the market. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Scott mentions the word appealing housing, and appealing housing not only includes affordability, but also includes location. And that's where the district comes in in this important partnership, is looking at what we have for inventory and what we can leverage. And one of the things that the district has is property. So, to that end, we looked at all 28 properties that we have currently in inventory, and noted the ones that are not earmarked for development as school facilities into the future. The reasons why they're not being earmarked for development as school sites is basically because of size, location, might not be conducive to the area that we bought in, or there's an ability to use the site for more than just schools. So, in that end, we found three potential sites. We found one site in each of our assignment zones. It's also good to note that we've looked at these sites as far as the modification requirements in the Lee County Comprehensive Plan, and these sites that we're considering today in this proposal are not affected by that comp plan. So, when we looked at these sites, we looked at considerations such as their proximity to the targeted population. In this particular case, it's teachers. And you saw that cluster map that we showed you earlier on, that was very key. Where do our teachers live, and where are schools located? So, any affordable housing that we build should be in locations to where teachers live and where they work. So, distance was one of the key factors. Also, to appealing means it's in a location that someone feels comfortable living. So, we looked at crime, zoning, and future land uses for where those properties are located. And of course, proximity to the day-to-day necessities of any person, not just teachers, grocery, gas, entertainment, education if they had children, or childcare, or medical attention. So, we've identified three properties that are currently on our inventory. The first one is on Del Prado Boulevard in Cape Coral. Many of us might remember this site, it was the site for the ALC West that we had portables on. It's about 9.8 acres, which makes it too small for really any other traditional school campus. We identified this because it's proximity to services, especially on that corridor, Pine Island and North Del Prado. The site obviously doesn't require much fill, which we know dirt is not cheap, so we know that it's a very developable piece of land. And again, it's proximity to other schools that teachers might teach in, along Del Prado Boulevard and off of Pine Island. The second site that we assessed and bring forward today is on Palomino Lane. That's in our student assignment south zone. It is 20 acres, which makes it a viable location for an elementary school. However, when you assess its location in a development, it makes transportation, both bus and parent, very difficult in that area. So, in our assessment, it would be a far better use of that property for housing. It's favorable because not only is it located in the south zone, travel-wise, it's pretty close to the east zone. If you grab onto Daniels and just head north, it runs into Gunnery. So, it has the viability of servicing two different zones, or schools, or teachers that would work in those zones. Lastly, we looked at property number three is on Ty Street, and that's in East Fort Myers. That property is quite large, it's 115 acres. We do have it earmarked for development well into the future as either an elementary or a middle, but with 115 acres, there's quite a few things we can do on that site. This particular site is located in an area where student growth is really taking off. Our east zone is one of our fastest-growing zones. Also, it has the ability to possibly develop single-family housing, which gives us a little bit more flexibility over what you'll see as being proposed on both the Cape Coral and Palomino sites. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeVito to talk about an example of how one of these properties could be developed.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Dr. Atkins, members of the board, thank you for your time, and for those attending today. So, in the next slide, we just have kind of a broad stroke of the financials as it relates to a project of this size. And if you look this over, you can see about a $48 million total cost for approximately 382 multifamily units to be developed, this example on the Palomino site. One of the things we wanted to point to is that this is an investment, and, and this investment has the potential, obviously, depending on the debt instrument that's used, and the equity that's put into the project, to be a cash-positive, financial cash flow generator for the school board. The next slide is an example of projects that we've been involved with in the past. I mean, it's a three-story walk-up amenity package, you can see the pool, retention pond with a walking path. This is just an example. Of course, each site would have a specific site plan developed, and a specific elevation for, for the project itself. The next slide, for those of you that want to spend some time looking it over and maybe ask some questions pertaining to these financials, is simply, again, a broad stroke, financial arrangement. It's an analysis based on some data that we have, and then some unknowns that would be defined at a later stage. Again, you can see a cash, a cash-positive arrangement for the school board in this type of development.
Last one?
Yes, I'm going to turn the projected rental rates versus actual market rates over to Scott.
Thank you. One thing I want to mention about the previous slide of the, of the picture, the photograph of the development concept, we would not compromise any type of development from, to deviate from a Class A apartment community. This is not affordable housing, okay? It's not something that we have a budget from the federal government to come in and subsidize, any of the funding to assist with the cost of it. So, we are fully aware of the conditions out there and what teachers and the workforce deserve, and in any way that this development does proceed, we would go with Class A, a Class A concept of apartments. This table here just shows the rental rates of where we envision a community on Palomino. So, our unit mix consists of one-bedroom, one bathrooms, two different models of them, two-bedroom, two bathrooms, two different models of those, and a floor plan for a three-bedroom, two-bathroom. Our rental rates have been lowered to approximately 15 to 20% below market rate, so we believe that that is a attainable rental rate for those in the workforce, especially teachers with a low tenure of zero to two years, earning approximately $40,000 a year. The numbers were designed to, to, to not exceed the rent burdened definition from HUD of exceeding 30% of annual income spent on housing. So, as you can see, the difference between market rate and our product concept is a $200 difference a month on the one-bedrooms on average, a $375 difference from market on the two-bedroom, two-bath, and on the three-bedroom, two-bath, we're saving $288. And until we really dig into this with value engineering, with Mr. DeVito and I are, are very well-prepared to do so, we can even dig further into further cost savings of value engineering, the site work, and the vertical component of it, without compromising the development itself to attain, to achieve these attainable rental rates.
And as you've, I know, heard over the years, back when Dr. Atkins was in this role, he, he did a study about the cost of teacher turnover, and just sort of updating that a little bit, but still being very, very conservative. If you look at an average of $32,000 that it costs us every time, you know, we turn over a particular teacher, if, if we could retain 100 of those a year, you know, looking at that whole retention wheel, and all of the aspects, and, and what this type of projects would bring to that, you could see that that would result in, in savings to the district because we would not have, have that expense. As we look at Vision 2020, you know, our ultimate goal and why we're here is for the students, and increasing student achievement, and each of the other goals support that overall goal. And we believe that this particular type of project is one that would address several of the goals in, in Vision 2020. You know, looking at Goal Two, and increasing, obviously, our partnerships with the community, looking at Goal Five, the potential for, you know, more cash flow coming into the district in time. Goal Three, which is the crux of where this started, and teacher turnover, and then continuous improvement, you know, which is what we're always looking to do. And a couple closing points that I would like to make are that, you know, this is, this is not a project that is the only thing we're doing. I mean, if you looked at that retention wheel, you'll see that compensation for teachers is, is on there, and is definitely in the forefront. And when we looked at the top reasons that teachers leave, once you get past, you know, the principal in the building, it really becomes about the, the, they're, you know, kind of the, the life outside of work, which has to do with being able to afford a place to live that they want to live, and then also having the, the socialization. And a project like this would sort of inherently provide that socialization and connection, which is why a lot of our out-of-county and out-of-state recruits don't stay, because they don't make connections with people here. And so, this, this would, would address, would address that. So, I think it's important to note that we're, we're not going to not, you know, address teacher compensation as a result of doing something like this. This is just another added thing that, that we would like to explore, so that we can try to get at, you know, like I said, why is it that they're leaving, and, and this is, is directly, you know, related to that. So, I think it's, it's, it's important to note that. Again, this all started by attending a community meeting, and meeting these gentlemen there in a focus group related to this particular issue, and, and we're very excited and hoping to move forward in, in exploring this option. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members.
I have to say, wow. Mainly because this, I, I live in Lehigh. I know that the majority of our teachers who teach in Lehigh cannot live there for a couple of reasons. Affordable housing, and also being within a community that they are with like-minded people, especially for young, single. So, I just appreciate the fact that we're trying to provide something that's more affordable, and allows for that collegiality of our, of our educators. And I am also assuming this will include other workforce people would be involved with this, or...
Well, that would be one of the avenues that we will, we would explore, is would we want to include working with, you know, the sheriff's department, the city police force, firefighters, if that's something that would be in the, in the next phase of, of looking at this issue.
Yeah, I, I think it's important because you're, you're developing a community of life, like-minded people who are service-oriented, and who are very professional about what they do. And many of our teachers, when they come here, have difficulty finding other people like them, and making those connections with other people that have a, have real strong goals for what they want to see happen in their lives, and are purposeful. And so, I just think this is wonderful.
I, I also forgot to add that one of the things that we had talked about in moving forward with this, is looking at some type of plan that would allow us to work with teachers, yeah, in a five-year plan to save money, so that they then could afford to purchase a home, so that they wouldn't have to be lifelong renters, that is part of the overall wellness, which would be financial wellness. We would look at ways that we could come up with a program that it would work with them to save that money, so that it could go towards a, a down payment on a home in the future.
That's powerful.
Mr. Toyver.
Thank you. You mentioned the $32,000 replacement cost. It should be noted, that's a hard cost. That doesn't include the impact that it has on students in our district as far as that turnover and that, you know, inconsistency, which is, you know, a huge or intangible cost that we haven't even factored. I mean, we're being real conservative as far as that hard cost. So, I, I really think that's important. I also think it's important to real, to recognize that one of the biggest problems that we have, I think, in teacher retention is three things in one we're addressing internally as far as the, you know, the, the training and the acclimation in the school district, but it's also the, the acclimation to our community. And then, the third one is, again, the affordability of the community, which you touched on quite, quite well. I think by having affordable housing in, in areas where it's, where you set up a, an environment, you know, and I know, you know, Randy, Mayor Henderson's trying to do that, you know, downtown Fort Myers, in the same type of thing, to build an atmosphere, or a location, or a destination. And I want to be very cognizant of us doing that, and seeing, and hear more about that. But I think that, yeah, I think we're on the right, right track. I'm a real hesitant right now, even though I, you know, I love our firemen and our policemen, and I, I think all that needs to be addressed. I think we really need to right now focus on, you know, our own house, and get that. We have just a huge, you know, problem that's facing our district, and I think that that's, and I would be very hesitant to, to broaden that at this point. You know, I think we really need to stay focused within our, our own boundaries, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Just to comment on, just to follow up, you talk about the soft costs. I know that, I read a book by Lynda Darling Hammond, and I know that the, the book is dated 2010, and she quotes some research in that book by Rivkin, Hanischek, and Kane that speaks to teacher retention. And if you factor in the cost of replacing a veteran teacher with a new teacher, and the, and the lost cost there, the projection at that time, and this is prior to 2010, would have been $38,000 to $45,000, just to, to replace it. Now, that doesn't, that's over and above, that's accounting the administrative costs and the loss in student instruction, so, but that's a dated figure at this point.
Any questions, comments?
I got one, I got it. What? No? Okay, first of all, that's, this is exciting. I'm a realtor, so I get it. Affordable housing is an issue in Lee County, period, for everyone, not just district teachers and retention. I, I get the concept, so I'm good with that. I'd like to see the numbers, like, actually, for the first project, like, how many units per, are you expecting to have, like, and so, how does that affect, how many teachers would that be actually would have housing? My other concern would be the, all three properties, they all are, I think, pretty good locations, actually close to 75 are both of the Ty's and the Palomino. I know all three local areas. So, that is a great, you know, so, but, I guess, can we survey the district, and to see what staff and employees would actually be interested in housing, and who actually that touches? Because I just want to make sure that we have no vacancies. And so, that would probably be my most concern, that we want, and, and then if we do have vacancies, do we open that up to the community? I mean, how do we, you know, so how do we, how do we, how does that happen? So, I don't, you know, and now, and then my other question is, the district, are they investor landlords? I didn't, I mean, is that common in other school board districts? That's, I'm not aware, so that's just kind of new to me. I like it, so I want to see more. That's all.
I'll let Mr. Allen say how many units per building would be...
As far as number of units per building, it's tough to say until we really map out a site plan, but for Palomino site of 380 to 400 units, you know, that would be a total. And keep in mind that we're targeting this as attainable housing for what's considered workforce housing, and by definition, workforce housing is those that earn between 80 and 120% of the area's median income. So, if, if the school district did open it up to, you know, the other departments, then, then you're, then you have that much more tenant base to, to go after.
So, and, and part of the reason for even looking at opening up was for that reason, depending on, and again, this is just the initial surface, so we would want to come back to you with more, more detailed information. But that would be the reason, is so that for the, you know, as they said, it goes... But that would be the reason, is so that for the, you know, as they said, it goes by vacancies. So, I believe that they indicated to me, 18 months is what normally, when a developer builds, you know, a Class A development, that 18 months is what they gauge to get to full occup, what they consider full occupancy. But in the market conditions as they are now, you know, that's, it usually doesn't take near that, probably six months. So, you know, but that would be one of the things that we would want to explore further. And certainly, we could send out a survey. Part of doing the Black Belt project was to look at, you know, we're losing anywhere from 500 to 600 teachers every year. And those are teachers that are primarily in years zero through two. So we have to replace them with 500 or more teachers. And so, that's kind of what we anticipate the market to be, because those would be new people that are coming in, you know, to the profession. Not to say that some aren't already living here, but, you know, that would kind of be, that's what we base that on, is the results of that. And looking at the folks that did leave, and that the major, you know, that is one of the top three reasons that they leave. It has to do with housing and, you know, the socialization around living someplace and that sort of thing. So that was kind of the reason behind that.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes, I probably have more questions than comments, but a few things as we went through this. I didn't see any information on the value of the land that we're talking about, first of all. And this would be a collaboration and a partnership between the developer and the district?
Well, there's different models of which this could be done. And so, the value of the land and what that would bring to it certainly would be in the next phase of the information that we would present based on that. Our preference, as we've sort of talked through this, would be that the district would be the owner of the property and of the development, with the idea that a company would be hired to sort of manage it and maintain it. Because I certainly don't want to be in the landlord business and human resources, nor do I think the board would want to be in that business either. But that would, but we would bring to you what, you know, options and ideas related to that, you know, moving forward and getting more information.
Okay. And then, so, in that case, we're not at that point where we could even identify what exactly are the benefits to the developer, the benefits to the district, and the overhead, the cost overhead. And since the taxpayers own the property, basically, have we had any community input, or would that be another step?
That would all be part of the process.
Okay.
I would like either one of you to speak to the developers and kind of what's in it for you guys, so to speak, if you could address that.
Sure. So, I'm a Florida native. I've been developing attainable housing for 20 years. I've built just about 3,000 units in Lee County. You know, Scott and I attended the seminar on attainable housing, because, much like in '07, when the market really heated up, the subject has come back to the surface. And we really wanted to align ourselves with some like-minded folks and hear ideas. And so, you know, at the seminar, for instance, you had sizable employers, hotel years, you had Hertz, you had the school board and others. And the common theme was, is that we're having a very difficult time hiring and retaining. So, when we started to go down this process with the district, we recognized that having a piece of ownership as a developer, long-term, probably, there wasn't a path 15, 20 years from now. We really thought that the district should be in charge of the decision-making as it relates to the asset. And so, any relationship that the district would have with our entity would simply be a services contract. And long story short, we would take the process from vacant dirt through certificate of occupancy and assignment to a third-party management company. And there's obviously several steps that go into that, including, you know, designing the site, the architecturals, you know, hiring general contractors, working through the project during construction as the owner's rep, so to speak. So, as far as what's in it for us, is it's basically a fee for service, and being part of something that we believe in, which is providing housing for those that most need it, that really have as much or more of an impact on our community than anyone else in our community. So...
Okay. So then, this is not affordable housing, it's attainable housing. And it is not subsidized housing?
No.
That's correct.
Yeah. The only thing that I would comment about subsidized housing, and I don't want to call it a subsidy, but the main reason why we could potentially deliver the product at an affordable price is because of the land component. So, as it relates to a subsidy, it's really the district taking an asset that's not generating revenue, and then turning it into, obviously, an asset that can help save, hopefully, millions of dollars.
Money maker. Okay. And then, back to the other piece of it, the retaining the teachers. I know that we have a lot of variables here. The salaries are too low for the cost of living, rents are increasing, the growth. But when you look at those exit interviews, is there any evidence that there are other things involved? Teachers are overwhelmed with the amount of work they have to do, the whole accountability thing, VAM and all of that. For job satisfaction, this isn't what I signed up for, and I'm just kind of repeating what I've heard anecdotally. And the other thing is, for people who do relocate, if they don't have family or some social support, then that makes it difficult, too, and then they return.
Yes.
So, then we're looking at going into the business of providing attainable housing, making extra money for the district, yet, does that give us a guarantee? And our investment is strictly the land, or what more?
I'm not sure what your question is, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, let me start at the first part. Yes, there is more to the Black Belt project and information related to what you were talking about.
And could I just interrupt for one second? For the benefit of the listening audience, could you just briefly define what we mean when we're talking about Black Belt project?
So, it is a, sort of a high-level project that uses specific tools, which are Six Sigma Tools, analytic tools, looking at an issue, and really narrowing down to the very root cause of a particular issue, and then stratifying the data to determine what actionable items you can come up with that would actually make an impact on your issue.
Great, thank you. Okay.
So, just to piggyback on that, just for a minute, her division's attack at this problem is a multifaceted approach. This is, you remember the diagram or the picture of the wheel that she put up there, that this was like two spokes of the wheel, I believe? And the other thing that I just want to say is, and this is, I've had this personal experience, when I was a first-year teacher, that I think is still relative today, and that is, that when you move here from another state, you know, 1,000-plus miles away from home, this is a difficult community to get connected in. I jokingly say this, but it's the absolute truth. I took a part-time job at a car wash to meet people my own age. The apartment complex where I was residing and the place where I worked did not, it was hard to get connected. Not so much in terms of a work environment, because there were people there that were certainly caring, but there was no one that was really my age. And, you know, so, that type of connection is something that I think a lot of our young people struggle with. Many of them end up leaving and going back. And one of the things that I just, I think I added this in my email to you over the weekend, but the data relative to Vision 2020 overall is positive, but there are a few places that I pointed out that we do have where we're not hitting our milestone, and teacher retention is one of them. So, you know, we're pulling out all the stops. And then, we're trying to encourage a culture of innovation here, where they are free to bring forth really innovative ideas, and that's, this is, we felt, the first step was to bring it to this board and hear your thoughts and your questions and concerns, so then we could go back and beat up on this proposal a little bit more as we're moving forward.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think that you've done a yeoman's job of getting it into its inception. And I think we have to ask questions, because there's so many what-ifs.
Yep.
But, thank you for that, and I'll stay tuned.
Thank you.
So, most of my questions have been answered, but I would volunteer that if we're going to broaden, first of all, let me ask, are you talking about a P3? Or is this a district finance project?
A district finance project.
Okay. What rate are you, what finance rate are you presuming in your example? And at what point does it become break even or a loss for the district?
So, I believe the financial performer showed a rate of 4.5%. But the example also showed a fairly large equity position in the total cost. So again, I think if the district decides that we're moving forward, the next step would be identifying the lending source, the rate, and then we'd build a performer specific to what's available.
Okay, thank you. If we were to get involved with another entity, I would suggest the hospital, rather than fire and police, just because they have both a large population that mirrors ours, and because they have enormous experience with construction. And I think that's it for my comments. I wanted to ask Mr. Martin if he wanted to weigh in with any questions at this point.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this point, but just to point out that there are, I think, potentially, depending on the design of the project, a number of legal hurdles that would have to be addressed. One is, if the school district is to have ownership of the residences, there would have to be a determination of what funding can be used for that purpose that is within what's allowed by Florida statutes, like capital funding of the school district has, statute specifies for what purpose it can be used. And I don't believe there's any allowance for the construction of residences. Of course, that's something that can always be changed through legislative action, but there also would be need to consider if there's going to be some type of contractual relationship, some form of award of business, the need for a competitive solicitation process. There may also be a need, I know one of the properties is in the possession of the school district as a result of a donation of a developer for which they received impact fee credits. That deed and possibly others may have limitations with respect to the use of the property, which is something we'd have to look at. So, I realize we're in the beginning discussion stage, but there are issues there to be addressed.
And Dr. Atkins, do you want to add anything at this point?
No, just that, you know, I appreciate the questions and comments. I think that the teacher retention issue is critical to our success. We really feel that we need to get this turned around, and this is one of the things that we're looking at, is attainable housing for our young folks. And not so young folks, by the way.
So essentially, the consensus of the board at this point is, let's move on to the next stage, give direction to HR to move on? Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. DeVito and Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
And Mark for this out-of-the-box thinking.
Yeah, definitely out of the box.
Okay.
Just want to go ahead and shift to Benita Springs High School and provide you with an update. One of the things I want to be clear on is that we strive to be very transparent, so anytime that we have a challenge, we want to bring it to your attention. Staff did this not too long ago, looked at some cost concerns that relates to the overall construction cost of Benita Springs. They brought that to my attention, and we quickly brought it to your attentions. We thought that a board briefing would be appropriate, so that you could be brought up to speed in terms of where we are. I will have to compliment staff that since they did bring this issue to me, we sent them back to work on really some good solutions. And I think you'll see some of that today. They will provide you with some alternatives. They also will provide you with some rationale in terms of how we got here from there. So anyway, having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mora, who will introduce his crew and then take us through the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board members. As Dr. Atkins stated, our purpose for briefing you this afternoon is in regards to updating you on developments at Benita Springs High School and the construction, construction concerns that we have brought forward to Dr. Atkins. Before I introduce folks, or let them introduce themselves, the topics today include construction variables, value engineering and building redesign, protecting the project priorities, a plan for adding back some of the engineering we took out of the building, and process improvement moving forward. So I'll turn it back over to, this is Mr. Law, and we'll just introduce each of these members here themselves.
William Law, the chief operation officer.
Bob Colwick, vice president of construction. Cristel.
Reggie Snell, director of facility development and programming.
And Vic Insonelli, I'm a partner at Car Rigs and Ingram CPAs.
Okay, next slide is construction variables, and I'll turn it over to Reggie.
Okay. Thank you, board members, Dr. Atkins, for being here this afternoon. You may have to bear with my voice here. Been under the weather for quite a few days, and so, just be patient. Today, we're going to talk to you about how we got into, excuse me, the situation that we presented to Dr. Atkins a week or so ago. And what you see in front of you are variables that are attributed to the budgeting issue at the Benita Springs High School. We've got construction inflation, labor shortage, higher costs for building separations, design enhancements, budget was calculated two years ago, property and finance acquisition delays, site development cost increases. So those are the items that we're going to talk about today. And we have some independent experts with us, and I'll chime in as we go through this process. The first one that I want to talk about is the construction inflation. That's one of those items that the original estimated project, with key term there, estimated, the project budget was developed in early 2015, is when we first put these projected numbers together for the Benita Springs High School. One of the things that we have seen in southwest Florida and South Florida is a common occurrence for us, unfortunately, is... for us unfortunately, is construction inflation has been averaging a minimum of eight percent annually over the past two years since we have developed that budget. And in some major systems, it's gone over 10%. HVAC and some of your primary larger systems that you see in the schools, they've gone up over 10%. So when we sat down and tried to figure out how we got where we got to, we estimated that the inflationary impact and the number that we were given from the construction manager was about $8.5 million. Now to give you an example of what we're looking at, because we're just, we started the project last week, we're moving dirt, so, but we still have to buy the vast majority of the product and the labor force that's going to go into building this school. So you take that current inflation rate, every three months that we go into the project, you're looking at about additional million dollars increase just on in construction inflationary costs because we're going to be buying this project from now through the summer. So you've got about six months of additional inflationary pressures that are going to affect this particular project. Bob, you want to quickly comment on what you see as a construction manager?
Is this on? Generally, yes, we're seeing an eight percent increase every year roughly. Some things, as Reggie mentioned, are a little higher. Fewer would be off some for that. This conversation's not an unusual one. We go through a lot of projects and, you know, we get down to, okay, how do we save some money? It's over where we thought we would be and I think they've done that well here. You go to the next slide, it shows the building cost index. I'm sorry, I think I'm, I'm back one. No, they went, there it is, that one. That's from means cost data. It shows the upward trend pretty strongly. We're a little bit of a smaller area. I think we've been absorbing a larger increase over the last few years now that things are coming back. One of those is the labor shortage, which is the next slide. Labor shortage, we have, all the major trades are looking for people. They all are short from what they would like to be, but some other factors I think that run in there, a lot of subs I talked to, they're not interested in going up like they did back in '06, '07 to four, 500 people. They're controlling it, they're keeping it a little smaller, hence their capabilities are not as big and they're picking and choosing the work they get to work on. This project, in order to make the schedule now, is looking at seven days a week. There's inherent inefficiencies in that. The 2 million you're looking at is pretty much salaries, but you wind up burning people out, getting tired. For a company to put that many resources into a project, they wind up, you know, having to drop other things. So, the contractor smartly is splitting the work between multiple contractors. It's a little extra management, but I think that's the only way you'll get the people and you'll get the, the schedule close to what you need, which it is very aggressive. So, I see all those as factors, you know, the labor. We're also, you know, we're not attracting, and I think Vic, you had some statistics on how many people dropped out of the labor force from the peak till right now where we're starting to peak again and they're not coming back.
Just as a matter of, this one's on, yes. Just a matter of background, our firm and me in particular personally, we do work for about 13 Florida school districts as well as universities and health, healthcare facilities and we, we basically audit construction contracts. So we're involved with a number of owners. And unfortunately, I have to corroborate what Bob has said. I discussed this with a number of my owners before I came today and the story was the same in their districts, in their, in their building programs also. They're seeing substantial growth in prices and the primary thrust of that is in labor. For example, in the, after the, in the recession, it's estimated that 40% of the labor force left the construction industry. And what they're finding is, is that they're not coming back as quickly as they had hoped for. And some of that's because of the uncertainty that Bob has mentioned with the companies not wanting to ramp up like they had in the past. And part of it is because younger people don't see the construction industry as a place they necessarily want to be, probably because of what happened in, in the recession. So we do see this squeezing, especially at the subcontractor level, I think more than anything else. And that's resulted in not only higher prices in getting that labor, but making sure you have enough people to even do these projects. Construction has, statewide, construction has recovered to some extent. The projects compared to five years ago are substantially more. There's more private work out there for the builders to pick from and as a result, it's turned into price increases for all.
The, the last bullet, there you go. The, the last bullet about the projected labor cost estimated at 2 million. When we started drilling down into the numbers and we were looking at the labor, we had developed that in order to maintain the schedule, and Mr. Torber, as you well know, I sleep with that under my pillow every night. And I still do. And what we were looking at, and we've, and I'll be mentioning some meetings later on in the presentation, is to build a high school on a straight schedule, you need 20 months. That gives you a five day, 40 hour work week with a Saturday safety day. What we have now is, starting March 1st, and we actually started two days ahead of schedule working on the site, we have 16 months to deliver this high school for an 18 opening. So what does that mean? Well, what this means is if we say we're going to go back to a straight schedule, that means we have to move the opening date back and I don't believe that that's an option because when we did the actual cost analysis, it is less expensive for us to pay for the additional labor of running a seven day schedule versus running a five day schedule, moving the school back to either a mid-year or a next year opening, because now you have to account for the portable farm that's going to be at Estero. So when you start adding up all of these numbers, and that's not even including the inconvenience of Jeff and his staff that they're going to have to put up with, it, we-
Or the impact on the students.
And the impact on the students. That would be a huge one. And so, we have to, we have to move forward where we are right now. The next slide are 10 concerns that the industry has, what they saw in 16 and what they expect in 17. The top one was cost and availability of labor. That is our biggest problem that our industry is having right now and it's across the board. You just heard it from, from the presentation in front of us and I did not pay them to come here and do that presentation, just so you know. The, the, one of the other large impacts at 60% is building material prices are also going through the roof. As, as the construction market rebounds, because inventories have been so depleted of materials, the, the supply of materials is down, demand is way up, so those prices are being squeezed. I'm, thank God we have relatively low oil prices or I don't even know what this chart would look like. The, the other thing that's in the middle, it says federal environmental regulations and policies. I want to quickly touch on that one because that doesn't really have anything to do with Benita Springs, but I want to bring it to your attention because this is going to rear its ugly head at Triple M. Because we are already in, in pre-status meetings with both the Army Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife, and, and they are short-staffed. They don't really want to move at a fast pace. We're looking at anywhere from 18, 12 to 18 to 24 months for their permitting. As a matter of fact, on Triple M, we're going to put in for a permit April so that we can, we can meet the revised schedule. So that's another impact that you're going to face. One of the other things that we drilled into, we had some design enhancements that we tried to put into this school that we don't normally do. One of the things that we did and we're keeping is we took the prototype, which was all under one roof. And anybody that's been a high school principal, I don't know if Pete's still in the room or not, but one of the problems with the single roof prototypes was if you had a nighttime event in a gym or an auditorium, when the, when the public came into those events, they also had access to the rest of the school. It was a security nightmare. So after we built those prototypes, a lot of principals that were in those schools came to us and said, on your next generation, please split the buildings apart. Well, we did that. We had conversations with Dr. Atkins. He was in full support of that early on. And, and so what we did is, is we took the, the island coast kind of version. We, we split the auditorium and the gymnasium away. So if you have an event in the auditorium, you're only going to the auditorium or the gymnasium and you can still get into school if you so choose. This not only helps enhance safety and security, but it also helps with the community in wanting to access these things as we look to increase our facility rentals as part of the, of the 2020. One of the things that we also did in our enhancements is we have some very bold and innovative academic programs that are going into this school. So we tried to match some of the design features with that. Some we were able to keep, some we weren't. But the thing is that all of those academic programs get the bulk of what they need. And when we did all of this drilling down to kind of see what this number was, it, it was around 3 million to do everything we were looking to do. And so what we did is, and the reason we got there is we had a shift in the district mindset to get away from an institutional facility. The superintendent was, was very encouraging and motivating that it's time that we did something besides an institution, okay? And, and, you know, at first, and I actually told him this, I wasn't real sure, but then after I started seeing what we were doing, I bought in. We were doing the right thing. So, we have been able to maintain some of these enhancements and some of them, we hope to get back at a later date.
I'd echo Reggie's sentiments in regards to looking at our proposal to reduce the overall budget for this program. We are looking to take some of the enhancements away from the proposed design. However, I'll, I'll note that it does not change the academic programming that we have planned there. There is no impact on the six career academies that we have planned. They'll be fully equipped, the space stays intact, as well as the collegiate academy. Those things are not going to be affected by any design change that we make to this building. I'll also suggest this, that some of that $3 million enhancement that Reggie mentioned is not off the table. We are continually looking for revenue streams that allow us to enhance any school, in particular this one. So we do fully anticipate that through naming rights, through business partnerships, through sponsorships, that a lot of these elements that we are reducing on this design will return in the future.
The slide that you're looking at now, on the left, excuse me, is Benita Springs. On the right is Island Coast. And, and you can see the difference just in looking at those two photographs of the difference between innovative and institutional. Now Bob built that school at Island Coast. It's a wonderful school and, and at the time we built it, it was, it was considered state of the art. But if you look at the Island Coast, what do you see? You see literally no landscaping, you see mostly asphalt, and then you see a white stark, straight up building. You look at the one on the left, Benita Springs, you've got the buildings are split apart. We have a five acre wetland as the front door. You have a lot more green spaces around the school that the students can use to enhance their experiences and the community. So when you, when you look at what these two are, the, the one on the right is more of an institutional, it serves its purposes perfectly fine. The one on the left was the, the innovative, bold approach that we were looking to get to.
You know, one of the variables that we have to remember here is some of the delays, the starts and stops we had in this arduous journey to build a high school in Benita Springs. We all will remember, almost two years ago, we had originally had intentions on building at our district-owned property on Tower Road, which quickly came to an abrupt halt when we found that the DRGR was not a favorable place for a high school and the community responded as such. So we pivoted from there and started to do our search in Benita Springs. In about 18 months, we actually located the Imperial Parkway site. But I will tell you, in our experience, and Dr. Atkins will say, this is a learning experience for our district, this is one area that we did not have any land in the inventory. And we started looking at the prices and we'll show you a graph comparing the Benita Springs median market prices to all the rest of the county. You'll note that Benita is a very hot market, so that was a challenge. Moved back the opening of the school and set back the schedule considerably. So the current site that we have right now in control wasn't closed until August 2016. And part of that process includes the COPs financing for the actual school itself and the property. That's something that we could not do until we had a contract and we had property closed. So those all impacted this timeline as well as the overall budget for this school. This is the, the graph I was showing you. You can see the dotted black line at the very top of this graph is indicative of the median market price in Benita in comparison to the, the market-wide median as well as the market-wide median here in Lee County. So it's a considerable hot market when you compare it to other parts of the county.
The, the next balloon here, the higher cost for the building separations, you know, I was, I was talking earlier about that we wanted to maintain those separations. When we originally estimated what we thought that that would cost us, because in, in doing that, you're adding additional tilt walls, you're adding mechanical systems, electrical, you're, you're, you're splitting a lot of stuff off. And, and, and I'll be quite honest with you. This one's on me. I screwed this up. I got nobody else to blame. I underestimated what that cost was going to be because the construction inflation and, and the labor issues were a lot higher than when I sat down in 2015 and started working on these numbers as to what that splitting of the building was going to cost. And, and it's one of those things that, I guarantee it'll never happen again, but it, you know, that's part of where we are today and why we're here talking to you on that.
Yeah, Dr. Atkins mentioned sending the design team and district staff back to the table to find a solution for this issue. One of the things that we reassessed was our enrollment projections. We recently, and I believe we briefed the board in regards to bringing, bringing back a more comprehensive and accurate forecasting model and something that the planning department continues to work with Dr. Paul Van Buisker on developing. So, we took a second look at what our enrollment projections were, particularly in the South Zone for high school. And what you have here for a graph is indicative of what we have forecasted. So you'll see right now, all of our South Zone high schools collectively are over 100% utilization. Not cause for alert. There are many school districts that operate at a much higher utilization rate, but we know as a district to be world-class, we certainly want to be below 100%. Most principals will tell you 95% utilization is probably optimum. So as you follow this graph out five years, you can see the impact of first opening up the portable campus at Estero High School. It mitigates any utilization growth that first year in 17, 18. And as you add subsequent classes to Benita Springs, when it opens up in the hard building, we continue to reduce the utilization rate district-wide. And I only showed you out five years. If we continue out another five, it remains less than 100 or at 100%. That's given the conditions now. Enrollment projections are what they are. It's something that the planning department looks at annually and we readjust our comprehensive plan for school development based on these projections. So one of the proposed solutions is to reduce the number of student stations in this school from 2,000 to 1,600 student stations. Just to get some input from educators and principals and building administrators on what that means to them as far as delivering an education- as far as delivering an educational program. I asked Mr. Estes, who will be the principal or is the principal of Benita Springs High School, what does that mean when you reduce student stations? And we look at models like Estero High School, whose capacity is around 1,675 and the enrollment's not much bigger than that. It offers schools and administrators a lot more flexibility in the types of programs they offer. And when given the academies that we're planning here, it provides more access to the students. If there were 2,000 students in that school, there would be much less flexibility for them to have an opportunity to participate in one or more of those academies. So there is some silver linings to reducing student stations here. But I also understand it's also our, it's our job to ensure that we have seats for all of our students projected out more than just five, 10 years. So just to give you some background in regards to why the recommendation that 1,600 would be a safe move to go is based on projections as well as the flexibility it provides the principal in planning a program.
Okay, let's talk about numbers. When we got the estimate from the construction management firm, after he reviewed the design drawings, and these were not completed drawings, he did a complete analysis of what he had in a lot of the, or all the subs that were interested in doing this. And that's where the first large number came, and that's the number that we took to the superintendent. We were, staff had concerns that, is this a real number? Is this number of 66 million that he brought forward, is that a real number? And so what we did is we brought in some, an independent review from another firm, a construction management firm here in town, and Bob was part of the team. We brought in their chief estimator, a guy by the name of Joe Pressler, who's probably one of the best in town at doing that. And we had them review the same data that the construction manager had. And Bob, you want to give a quick?
Well, I guess bottom line is Joe was within 2% of what the other contractor came out. Joe's estimated, he did Ida Baker, he did Island Coast, Mariner Middle, Veterans, Golden Gate, Barron Collier years ago, quite a few high schools. So he's probably done more than anyone as far as estimating them goes. And he corroborated where they're at pretty strongly.
And I also had a conversation with Vic about what was going on in other areas of the state that he was saying. And Vic, you were saying essentially the same thing.
Yeah, we've seen, we've seen a number of these projects kind of follow the same trail. In particular, I was talking to one of my owners, another school district, and they too were looking at a school in 2015. And they were estimating that school to be somewhere in the mid-50 million for construction costs. They've started it. They're a little further along than you are, Reggie, having just started. And the current GMP is right around 65. So they saw the same, that same increase that I think you experienced.
Well, when we had our meeting with the superintendent and we, he asked us for, to solve the problem. And we went back with staff, with the project team, and we literally went through everything in the entire project. And one of the first things that, in this business, the easiest way to save money is to reduce square footage. However, to reduce square footage, you need to do a reduction of student stations. So that's where we worked with planning to see how that would or would not impact the South Zone if we reduced by 400. They came back and said, we're okay, for almost 10 years. So what that told us is that we weren't putting, we weren't, we were not stressing out the high schools in the South Zone by doing this. So that was very key. So what we did is we started reducing square footage around the school to meet the 1,600 student stations. That realized the savings of almost $10 million right there. We also did some site development value engineering where we decided in working with water management that if we dug some additional retention lakes on our own site, that we could capture that dirt without having to truck it in from outside. That was one of the things. We saved a half a million dollars on dirt alone by really getting creative on what we could do on the site. There were some other items on the site that we did that realized a little over a million dollars in savings. Another thing that we're doing, we're currently working with the county for them to supply the red light that will be the primary entrance on Bull Shark Drive, which is the name of the drive going into the school. And they're gonna supply the red light. And in return, we're gonna give them, or in negotiations, on some property for them for their parks and rec. So it'll be an even swap, a red light, just in case you're wondering, is around $750,000 to $800,000. So those are some of the things that we did. We also did some of the design changes and some value engineering. Some of the enhancements that I talked about earlier, they were eliminated. They did not, and I emphasize, did not affect academic program whatsoever. Those were right at 2.8 million. We also looked at the actual products that were going into the school. Floor covering, lighting, plumbing, electrical fixtures, things like that. And the edict there was, we gotta find 1%. I was a subcontractor for close to 25 years before I came to the district. So I know what that's like when a CM or an owner looks at you and says, I like your number, however, I need 2% if you want to get the deal. So that's basically what we did here, and that's the 485,000. The other number here, sales tax savings, I don't know how many of the board members realize that on every project, we try to capture the maximum amount of sales tax without having to pay the sales tax. Because we have the authority that we don't have to pay sales tax. However, what we have to do is we have to buy the materials ourselves in lieu of the construction manager. Labor does not count on this. So we took our revised budget, excuse me, and said that we're gonna get 1.2% of the sales tax, which generally in industry standards, a 1 to 1.2 is good. I didn't want to overestimate it because we told the superintendent that everything we were gonna give him was actual numbers. So you see a sales tax savings of 575,000 there. Now, all of those value engineering savings, which do not affect any of the academic programs of the school, totaled right at $15 million, 14,945, 525. We were still over budget by 520,721, based on what the board approved a little over, almost a year ago now. We approved, the board approved these numbers. So that's, that's where we are. And this is not the first time that we have been here with this type of situation. This has happened before, but with Dr. Atkins wanting to make sure that everybody is aware of what's going on. There's nothing being done in the back rooms or anything like that. In our first generation of the prototypes, Mr. Torga, I think you were on the board then, and Ms. Cuckle, or Dr. Cuckle might have been.
Yes, she was.
The elementary school and the middle schools came in way over budget. So what staff did at that time, once we got those preliminary numbers, we took those back down into the projected budgets and redesigned the two prototypes to get back into budgets. And so, but that was done quote-unquote behind the scenes. Nobody ever really knew that except the people that were actually involved. And the last time that this happened was a few years back when we did Tyce Elementary School. We were 3.2 million dollars over that projected budget. So we literally had to go through each of the line items to get that back into budget. We did. We built the project for that amount. Actually, I think it went over about 50,000 or so. But we've done that in the past. The difference here is, is this group is sitting here at the table telling you how we got here and how we're gonna fix it. So those are the numbers. Up next is a conceptual redesign that our architectural firm, VSSW, has provided for us. We still have the separated buildings. We still have architectural features that are in the building. We have the entryway atrium that's in the admin area there. We were able to keep that. And the architect has also done some work on the classroom building, which is now two stories, not three, it's two. So you get a piece there. The green roof there, that's one of the school colors. They are like FGCU, blue and green. That's the school colors. And their mascot is a bull shark, and I'm sure we'll work that in. So.
But he knows that, Reggie. Now the whole world knows.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry.
All righty, moving on to the next slide. I think we've belabored the point that we're protecting the project priorities. And obviously, the dynamic programs that we have planned for this school, including the academies, collegiate academy, the Air Force JROTC, those will not change. They will be remaining as part of the program at this school. Reggie also mentioned that the separation of the campus, pulling out the auditorium and gymnasium will happen as well. That encourages community use and hopefully down the road, provides us with a revenue stream with rentals. I think more importantly than that is the schedule is maintained for 2018 opening. Reggie mentioned the portable farm at Estero High School. That's coming at a cost of $1 million. So if any delays there, we'll just increase not only construction costs, but the cost to maintain portables for one more year. We have not changed anything as far as activities are concerned. We'll have a full schedule of activities, including athletics. We have scaled back some of the bleachers and the stands there because there is a smaller capacity for students. And again, just to reinforce the fact that we are confident with our new enrollment forecasting model that we have adequate seats 10 years into the future in the South Zone.
As Mark talked earlier on a couple of slides, as we continue with our revenue initiatives, the district is looking at how we can leverage our costs to support our needs. And looking at that is going back to adding back to our plan. We have created three kind of methods that we think that would help with our capital in terms of supporting those things that is important. And the first that you'll look at is fundraising. We're looking at someone within the community in terms of supporting us in the greenhouse, as well as looking at the naming rights. And that is our solar field panels and other things that we have on the campus that we are building. And last but not least, then, we're looking at the partnership. And one of the things that we're doing already is working with our contract vendors in terms of leasing out our trailers. And right now, I think that we have a couple, I think about three of them that we have already leased out so far.
Thank you, Mr. Law. As with Dr. Pruitt's presentation, the previous group that was here, she mentioned the Black Belt, Six Sigma Lean Management, and looking at problems and issues and getting and drilling down to the root causes. And I think this experience, as Dr. Atkins will always suggest, is a learning experience. We cannot do things the way we've done in the past. This is a different climate and a different era. So we've learned quite a few lessons. And when you learn lessons, you make commitments to improving your processes. So I just want to go through a couple of things that we're going to be doing, not only with this project, but with several others that are due up in the next five years. We're obliging ourselves to look at budget calculations based on multiple costing resources. You heard Bob talk about inflation costs with RS Means. That's something that we gotta keep our eyeball on. What's going on in the market that's causing inflation and how does that impact our budget? And that's something that we gotta continuously monitor and update the stakeholders on. The next one is accounting for project lag time. I talked about that arduous journey with finding property in the South Zone had an impact on the budget. That's something we also have to be mindful of. So accounting for project lag impact on budget estimates. And coming back to the board and informing the superintendent whenever the total project cost escalates. We want to look at a regular monthly budget review and reassessment process. So if anything changes, we're aware of it, we're reporting on it, and we're looking at how we can mitigate or address budget changes. We want to look at improving the district's capacity to forecast budgets so they're more accurate. And when we go forward with board approval for a total project cost, it's accurate. And lastly, we understand that at times, we need to bring in independent consultants that have expertise in these areas. Bob and Vic are examples of that this afternoon. And going forward, that's something that we will commit to bringing into the district. We want to bring in consultants that can provide us oversight of not only project management, also contract management. These are all things that we believe if we implement will make us more accurate and a little bit better with budgeting projects and keeping them on schedule. With that said, that's the end of our presentation, and I'd like to open it up to questions from board members.
Board members, who has a question? LaRiviere?
I just wish I had a larger view of the conceptual design so I can see, I wish I could have seen the full piece. And I know that's coming.
Ms. LaRiviere, Kevin, you're sitting out there in the audience. Can I have that tomorrow morning for her of what the whole building looks like? Thank you.
That would be nice, just out of curiosity. Because one of the best things about the other, about the original design was the fact that it looked like a college campus. And I hope we're able to still get it as close to that kind of a look rather than the institutional. I love this. I have no problem with the reduction of the seats. I think that's very pragmatic. And I was telling Dr. Atkins earlier when we met, I said, I'm a member of New Hope Presbyterian Church. We finished and moved in this past summer. When we started the building, at that time, we were under budget and were able to keep adding enhancements. It was just because of the time. We are in a different time. That's not possible these days. So I understand where we are. I also understand we learned from some mistakes. And I just appreciate the fact that you've been diligent and thoughtful about ways to reduce the deficit as much as possible.
The comment that you made about the college feel to it, one of the things that we did not do, or did not touch or change in any way, all of the courtyards, both around the media center and the cafeteria and outdoor dining are still there. That's one of those things that maybe we can have somebody sponsor some landscaping or whatever for those courtyards or have the schoolwork on it. The front courtyard entrance is still in place. All of the green space that we had allotted in the front yard, and the front yard is the wetland, is, everything is still intact. The only thing that's noticeable that you'll see is a lot of the rounded roofs are gone and some of the glass is gone. But as far as that feel of a collegiate thing, that's still there.
Any other comments?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Jibera?
Because I'll be honest with you, I've had a really hard time with this because it's a $15 million mistake. I mean, that's a huge mistake. That's not a little bit, not 2 million. But we've got constituents that we have to think about that it's taxpayers, it's my, it's my money. It's everyone that owns a home. This is their money. I don't feel that, I feel like a bid, the bid process should be accurate. They should have accounted for the labor shortage. That's been since 2008. That's not recent. The labor shortage just didn't happen. That's been that way. I don't understand why it wasn't accounted for. The same with, now we're gonna go from five days to seven, wasn't that in the initial, original costs? Because the time's been the same. We haven't lost much time. So that should have been in that amount. I don't understand. Now, now we're gonna pay overtime. Yeah, that's quite expensive. What would the savings be? I'm told there's not, I have to see what the savings would be if we went back to a five-day work where we're not gonna pay the overage. and the costs and what's the difference that is. For me, that's what I ha, I think we need to be transparent. And in the spirit of transparency, fifteen million dollars is not, and that we didn't know what's going to happen, is a big deal to the community. And it's a big deal to me. I'm, maybe I'm the only one. It seems like that. So I'm, somebody's going to have to shed that light on me. And I've been asking a lot of questions, and Mr. Moore, you have been wonderful in explaining. I still, I know we have to still meet and there's still some numbers. Because I've only seen one contract with G M or whatever builder it is. And I looked that over, there's a seven percent to the, to the, um, project manager or G M. Seven percent of eighty-five million, is that what they're going to get paid now? I'm so lost in the number because it was fifty million, it was seventy million, now it's eighty-five million. So there's numbers flying everywhere. For me, that's uncomfortable. And as a board member, in the spirit of transparency, I think we need to, I know and you're trying to do that, but I think that we need to be transparent. And I just don't feel like all of a sudden, just out of the blue, now we're given a few days' notice that it's over by fifteen million. So it gets, it just really is scary for me, that's all. It's a lot of money because we already have a budget issue and we don't have enough money. And now we're going to almost pay twice for a school that caused, that in two thousand seven, when they built Island Coast, cost fifty million. So I know the land has something to do with that and the number. And so I just think we need to be transparent with the community, that's all.
Right, and if I can address that. First of all, I, I would say that in the past, you would not have had this brought to the board in, in a briefing. Now you have it right here out in the open for the public to see. So I, I do believe that we are being transparent. In terms of getting the numbers, that's, that's why we're here and we're absolutely committed to share those numbers with you. You will receive them. I do think it's important that if I'm a taxpayer, I want to know why. And, and you know, there, there's two tacks I could have taken here as a superintendent. One would be, all right, let's quietly go back and work on this and get the numbers down. Instead, we brief the board and we bring it out here, this difficulty out here in the public. So I do think, and, and these folks know, I was beyond upset when I got, got the, the initial effort or estimate. I find it unacceptable. We all know that. And that's why I asked them to go back and take a look at it. We do live in a climate right now where we have rising construction costs and we should be able to predict what those costs are going to be by the end of this project. So that's why part of the charge is also about process improvement. I think that first of all, quite honestly, I think our original process was better than what it's done before. But that was done at a time where we had much more resources available to us as a school district. We had Pico, we had, we had two point oh mil, we had impact fees, we had all that stuff at our disposal. We don't have those things at, at our disposal anymore. And therefore, we have to be very prudent with the dollars. We understand that, and that's why I've asked Mr. Moore and Mr. Law that this will never happen to me again because we're going to go back and, and audit our process. And, and you know, again, my, my goal was always to do it the best in the state, the best in the nation. This wasn't that, although I think we learned some tough lessons. And I, I will say last thing. I do feel that after this was discovered, that they went back diligently to reduce those costs because I remember something Mrs. Morgan said when we were approving this. And that is that, you know, she wanted really guarantee that this was going to come in under budget. And I told them that, I said, "We committed to do that, and that's what we're going to do." So they went back and, and literally looked at every single thing I think they could to get down to that number. And then let me just say this. I'm also committed to bringing a world-class school to the community of Benita Springs. So even though some of the things have been reduced out of this, I, I believe that we do have a community. We have business partners. We have a number of people that will help us add back to this facility, particularly with those academies. So I'm kind of looking, I'm looking forward to out of, out of this setback that potentially we could actually build partnerships that will actually, I think, give our taxpayers a better bang for their buck than they would have had prior to this happening.
Well, I look forward to you audit and keep it on top of that. So thank you, and I'm glad you did bring this forward. Thank you.
Yeah, just one final comment. You know, I want to say that, uh, thank you for the transparency and for the report. And, you know, and we are in a time where we have had massive changes in the construction industry. And, and the labor shortage is no, no help to that. I love the design, even the, with, with the changes. And I know that we did lose time upfront in this project, so that probably cost us something. But not to mention what I always say when I speak to groups about how much less capital funding we have now than we did in two thousand eight. And also, um, I'm looking at the page seventy-four, the engineering and building redesign. So it looks to me like with those changes, we are, most of that fifteen million has been accounted for. And, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. La Riviere?
And I, I just want to clarify that we are right now four months behind schedule. And so that's the reason why we're looking at the seven-day weeks. And I appreciate the fact that Dr. Atkins, as soon as he was made aware of it, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but I believe you let us all know about this and that they were going to be fixing this. It was at the beginning of February, somewhere in February, I believe.
I believe that's correct.
So all of this work has been, and you were, I think you, I, when we met that morning, it was right after you found out.
They, they talked to me, I believe, late Thursday. They got together Friday with solutions, uh, working on solutions. And I had individual board member meetings on Monday.
Yeah, I, I remember you were adamant, this is not going to happen again. And so we did have that, we, in our individual meetings, we were made aware of the problem. I do believe you have done your best job at trying to make the changes based on estimating. And also, when we did get the, when the board approved the construction amount, it had nothing to do with bids, it had to do with estimates. Am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? No? Okay, I have some comments. I will start off by saying I get the labor and materials problem. I get it. But clearly, we have a process problem. And frankly, it became ten times worse in my mind when I heard someone say, "This is the way we've always done it, we just haven't brought it to the board." First of all, a year ago, when we, when we approved the bonding for this project, we should have had current cost. Now, I see that you're putting that in your new protocol, and that's perfect. I mean, that's, that's what we need to do to address this problem. I see that, I don't understand how, if we knew that the, the high school design did not work, the prototype did not work, and we had a year in which we tried to find property, we couldn't figure out, we couldn't start working on design changes to meet the challenges that were represented by the previous prototype and have some idea of what the cost impact would be of revising that prototype, regardless of site, to address the problem with the previous prototype. So I'm concerned about that. I am very pleased at the response in terms of your change in protocol. I think, but I think as a board member, I want to see that process in place before any decisions are made by me about M M M. I, I think we have a serious problem in the way we do business. I think we have had for a long time. I think we have brought it all to the surface. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. But we have got a problem. We've got to, we've got to acknowledge it and deal with it before we move forward. We've got a number of schools to build. Now that I'm cooling down a little, I'm going to make myself cool down a little bit. Naming rights. I will say that Jeff and I were at the Lions Club last night to talk about the new high school, Benita Springs Lions Club. And they were, and these are people who, a lot of these people are, are long-term Benita residents, so excited about the high school, so accepting of the fact that they would need to be changed. And they come up at the end and they say, "Just tell us. Tell the Lions Club, do you need money to buy soccer uniforms? Tell us what it is that you'd need money for." And, you know, and I've heard about naming rights since, I guess, September, October, when we got the Tebow contract. I think the Benita community would love to know what it is they can do to support this high school. Where are we with naming rights on Benita Springs High School? This is our opportunity to show the community that we welcome their, we need their investment. We welcome their investment, and we want to recognize in a very public way their investment. So I think that's another thing that needs to be addressed, from my point of view anyway, sooner rather than later, because I see the interest, but I don't see our preparedness. And those are my comments. Any other board member comments? No? Dr. Atkins?
Well, just finally, I, I do appreciate the questions and comments of the board. This is certainly what we had hoped for, believe it or not, when we came here. Because this is all about continuous improvement. So moving forward, I think that ultimately, you're going to be extremely happy with this project because we are committed to, to bringing a world-class school to the Benita Springs community. And then moving forward, I think you'll see a significant, substantial process improvements when we look at M M M and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for being part of this presentation. We appreciate the time and effort put into giving us a little education about this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no technology services, so next is public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please address the agenda item of public comment?
Schoolwork policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board's inserting any matter on this briefing meeting agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the agenda. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes.
Is there anybody on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to address the board? Anybody on the left side? Seeing none, we'll move on to board member comments. I'll start with Ms. La Riviere.
As with many of our board members, we were involved with Read Across America activities and going out to our schools and reading, which is probably the most joyful part of our job. And for me, it continues on to this weekend, even next week, for some schools that I was not able to accommodate in the schedule. So that has been wonderful. And then along the way, with many of, several of the schools, it not only included a time to read, but also a time to tour the campus and talk about some really wonderful things that are happening in our schools. And I am very proud of our administrators and our teachers and our students. I just want to get that out there. And then I will also share, I, beyond, it's been busy with lots of different things. But one of the aspects that I've been very focused on has to do with what's going on in legislature and doing what we can do to be an advocate. And Ms. Fisher, is that all right if I go ahead and bring up?
Sure.
Sure. Today, I was really made aware of what has happened in our, in the United States House in Congress and a bill that has been proposed by Senator, Representative King. I think he's from Iowa, if I remember, if I understand correctly. And he, um, he's got a interesting history about himself. But the part that's really is upsetting to me is the fact that it's basically a desire to dismantle E S A, the Every Child, Every Student Succeeds Act, and all of the positive components that are in there, which also includes returning more local government, governance and authority to the school districts. I will share some information from two people. I appreciate, I appreciate Ruth Melton with Florida School Board Association. She did a brief synopsis to us of some of the problems and issues with it. And then Bob Hogland, who has worked with our district, also sent some issues. And I'm sharing this out there because we have our, our deck people asking if you let us know what we can do. And this is something we need to make sure we can get people to be very vocal on. The basic aspect of it, it will create a voucher program to allow federal funds to be used for public and private schools or homeschooling. That's different than what we have within the state of Florida, where people make contributions for those. It limits the authority of the Department of Education to only award block grants to qualified states that they deem as qualified. So maybe Florida would not even get any of those grants. It establishes the program that, a voucher program through which each state shall distribute block grant funds among local educational agencies based on the number of eligible children within each geographical area. It also, and along with the voucher program, it is an effort to include provisions to repeal the No Hungry Kids Act to eliminate the requirement that schools increase the availability of fruits, vegetables, whole grains, and low-fat or fat-free milk in the school meals, and, and so on. Along with that, it also, as I look at the bill myself and I read it, I have to do some more comparison within that aspect. As I read that bill, I see that it affords the authority to decide whether or not the lunch a child brought from home is appropriate or not. So we're not only looking at infringement on local school district, but also into our homes. People need to understand what E S A does for our students and for our district. It ensures access to a general education program for all of our students. It ensures access to accommodations on assessments, which is important for our E S E students. It includes provisions that require local education agencies to provide evidence-based interventions in schools with consistently underperforming subgroups. With the program that they're wanting to put in place, there is no guarantee that interventions are going to be done for the students that need them. We are looking at some issues that we need to watch this bill, see what happens to the bill. We need to also let Francis Rooney, Tom Rooney, we need to look at the representatives that are, that are close to our area that we can touch and let them know that this is something we don't go along with because it doesn't ensure what's best for our students. So that is, again, United States House Bill six-ten.
Thank you, Mr. Toyber.
I have no comments.
I don't have any comments.
Ms. Fisher?
Okay, I'm going to be really brief. I'll, I'll save my, my good news stuff about Read Across America, et cetera, for later. But I have a little bit of a legislative update on the state level. So Mr. Dotting and I had a conversation with Mr. Sarah, our lobbyist, yesterday regarding our high priority bills, which include the restoration of the capital outlay tax rate. And there are some comments by the Speaker of the House and the House that they, they are not going to be in support of this because if the rate stays flat, we will collect additional revenue because of our growth. And so, and because of the growing property wealth of our citizens and corporations. They'll also be pushing for an additional two hundred and They'll also be pushing for an additional $250,000 homestead exemption, which would cost 700 million in reduced local tax collections for schools and other local entities. So as we look at that picture, following that federal report, I think we need to be diligent and in constant touch with our legislative delegation. I had a conference meeting with the Florida School Board's Advocacy Committee on Friday, and just a couple of highlights were that while the committees are in session, this legislative session, that we really need to be diligent and monitor those, even though we all, different groups of us, are taking trips to Tallahassee and lobbying for our own priorities. We need to be watching those committees carefully. And that there is a bill regarding shared facility use that has a lot of considerations considering that the taxpayers own our properties, yet we have liability issues. So they said that was another one to keep an eye on. The last thing is that they, on the good news side of it, that they do anticipate that we may, with the advocacy of the superintendents associations and the unions and Florida School Boards Association, that we may stand a good chance of seeing some reduction in testing and some more dedication of time for teaching, and that's just it in a nutshell. They talked about possibility of districts going out for a sales tax, may having to wait possibly until a general election and do something, like have a certain percentage of decrease in the certificates of participation. Or, do you want to weigh in on that, please?
I know that there are a couple of bills that would require sales tax referendums to occur only in general elections, and I believe there is also one of those bills that would require more than a majority, require 60% in order for passage. I don't recall an element with respect to affecting certificates of participation.
Okay, all right. So a supermajority, yes. Okay. And then there was another conversation during our conference with Mr. Sarah regarding the immigration law enforcement and that our district's a sanctuary, and we do not have a policy regarding that. But there was going to be a meeting of leadership and staff from districts around the state to discuss how they were going to handle that and continue to protect our students. So this morning, Governor Scott gave his State of the State address, and specific to public education, he made the following points. One, we continue to cut taxes and make it harder for future legislators to raise taxes. Two, he is proud that his budget produces a historic level of funding for our public schools, colleges, and universities. And three, that he closed his speech with a reference to providing for high-quality education for every child in the state as being critical to meeting all of his goals for economic growth. There was not any mention of teacher retention, recruitment and attention, retention initiative, and the only direct public school reference was to the historic level of funding for the third year in a row. And that's my report for this evening. Thank you.
I was invited, actually, Dr. Atkins and I were invited to attend a meeting with Sandy Cohen, Board Chair, Lee Health System, and key staff of Lee Health System, Marshall Bauer, at which we discussed opportunities to exploit partnerships between the two organizations that might be beneficial to our employees and to our bottom line. So I think there will be staff discussions between Lee Memorial and the school district moving forward. The Construction Advisory Committee visited two potential MMM sites, Alva and Gateway. For those of you who are watching TV, I forget which night the Gateway one was, but we had, we had students who had their graduation date shirts on, and, you know, everybody was excited. I actually thought there was a soccer game or a football game or something going on when I pulled up to the site. I couldn't believe how many people I saw there. Everybody was very courteous. We had lots of public comment, very supportive in Gateway. The Alva site, it was a little bit different. We didn't have quite the turnout from a public comment point of view. Some negatives, some positives. But generally, as Mr. Snell has said, and all of us involved with construction now have said, that it's just so nice to see people in the community wanting something as opposed to pushing it away. So everybody's excited about MMM. Tom Sarah forwarded to each member of the consortium his first weekly alert on Friday and asked us to send emails to each of our senators and representatives. I did so. I sent an email to each representative and each senator in our delegation. I encourage you to do the same. He is, the consortium has asked him to step up and help us be better advocates by telling us who is meeting when and who we should be in contact with. And I think it, he's giving us an opportunity, and he's telling us what to do. And I think, for me anyway, that's a huge benefit, and I feel I can act on it, and I hope that the rest of you do too. I think maybe we ought to have a conversation at some point as a board about what we want to do as a board in terms of advocacy, and what we want to do as individuals in terms of advocacy. There's a lot going on. There's some support for us in the Senate. We need to act on that. There's, the House environment is very negative. We need to deal with that. But I think we're getting the kind of timely information we weren't getting in the past that enables us to act. And so I'd like to see us have a conversation about.
And I think we're going to be doing that on the 21st at our workshop.
Oh, okay.
Then I will, that's part of the goal of where we want to go.
Okay, very good. Then that concludes my comments. And Mr. Martin, have you got any comments?
None this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Atkins?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Thank you. Seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 5:14.
Yeah, 5:14.
5:14. And we start again at 5:45 with, let me look, see if Cypress Lake High. That's right. Okay, thank you. Cypress Lake High Dance Team. So we'll see you all then. Thank you.